We, everyone.
How are you?
Dave should be here shortly, I hope, but.
It was pretty stormy. I drove through a hailstorm.
Oh, really? Okay.
He might be a minute.
Okay, well, we have enough to start, so we'll start. All right, so we will begin the public hearing portion of our meeting. Just to recap, the purpose of this hearing is to receive public input regarding adopting the impact fee, facilities plan and impact fee analysis, opposing impact fees, providing for the calculation, collection of such fees, and providing for an appeal process, accounting and reporting methods for the water and sewer impact fees. Do we have anyone here that would like to make a comment? Maurice? Is that green light on in the microphone? Jody, it looks like I did. I'm going to want to ask Maurice a lot of questions.
Not real prepared for this because I was told that there would be by the city some disclosures that I don't think were made. My understanding is, from reading the documentation, that the impact fee for sewer is going to be, well, this one says 3501. I think that adjusted from the prior one. Is that correct?
The one we passed previously?
Yes. We paid an $11,000 impact fee, and at the time, we objected to it, and again, object to this impact fee because it does not take into account those of us that paid $11,000, and I don't think it's a fair valuation based on the fact that at that time, we asked the city to look forward, make sure that that was going to be an honest and fair assessment for all of us. The city said that they had done that, but produced no study like this has been done. And so, on a case-by-case basis, I would ask that you would consider a refund. I see in here, for the first time, I've seen this, you have a document that states that those individuals that previously paid could only be refunded if they have made the request within a year. Is that correct?
Well, just so you know, we actually have been discussing a refund to those who did pay the excess fee, and the plan is to move forward with that.
Great.
So, you've got a letter, so it's not, there's no timeframe in which you would be barred. I mean, we're going to impose a limit on it. It's a 60-day, once you get notice of it, you've got to make the claim within 60 days to those who actually made that overpayment. So, we are trying to do that very thing.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. The other concern I had was, I see in here that the city's nuisance complaint document has been revised to remove anonymous complaints being filed. In my opinion, and again, I strongly oppose this because what you're going to do is pit neighbors against neighbors, or you will not have the complaints made because people will be afraid to, because they'll be afraid of repercussions. And so, I'd ask that you, again, allow for that. Third, I'd ask that you enforce ordinances uniformly. We know that has not been happening. We don't enforce the dog leash ordinance, we don't enforce the fire mitigation ordinances, we don't enforce other ordinance that are critical for our city to be safe. And I'd ask that you enforce them uniformly. Finally, though you've been gracious in allowing me more time tonight and being able to speak to you, I would ask that you change also the wording that allows for individuals to only speak for a minute or two. I think it's two minutes is what we're offered.
Yeah, that, we have not really been observing that because I do, I mean, if it becomes an abusive situation, then obviously, we've got to rein it in, but yeah, we're fine.
Right.
Being, you know, time is needed.
Thank you. The rest of this, quite frankly, because of the short notice and this being posted, I have not been able to go through it and review it. I know that on the sewer, there was a special improvement district that was created. I knew that $2 million was allocated for the construction of that sewer in the Thousand Oaks subdivision. In my understanding, that those fees had been paid, and yet, we're still charged an additional hookup fee. And so, my question to the council is, have you read that special improvement document? Do you even know about it? 2003?
I haven't read it, no. But I know that, Chris, you're on, I think you can probably speak to the financial aspects of this more specifically, if you would. And then Ted, you might have something to add to that. I don't know if your study took into account.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not prepared.
I could hear back here too well. Okay.
Mayor, I'm not prepared to make a comment tonight with, in light of this being a public, just a question period right now, so I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. So, Maurice, I guess what we can offer is to get an answer for you and get back to you.
Thank you. I'd encourage you to look that up, read it. I've requested through a grammar request, so it's readily available through Jody Stone's. And ask that you read that and take that into account when you consider the refunds. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we've got a couple. Sherri, you've got your hand up first.
Oh, I don't care.
No, please come on.
This has to do with the impact fees, and I guess it goes back to 2016. Jeff and I were in the process of getting our building permit, and somehow, we found out about Gloria Siemens doing a neighborhood canvas of who wanted to be hooked up to the sewer and whatnot, so Jeff and I took that over. And we approached Mayor Lauritsen about it and talked to him about the amendment to the original agreement, which goes back to, I think it was 2002. The amendment was 2002. Toby Harding signed it along with Don Meacham. That agreement was for a period of 10 years with two optional five-year extension periods. And in it, it talked about Meacham having to do certain things and the city having to do certain things. And one of those was sewer. And in the original agreement, I think it was in 97, between, yeah, 1997, the villages of Woodland Hills, or Woodland Meadows Project, which Bushnell signed along with Mayor Larson, both documents talk about each person having responsibilities. And it outlines it pretty clearly that the city was in negotiations about hooking up to a sewer facility. They were looking for one back in 1997. And then the amendment talks about the city shall, you know, hook up to the existing sewer, and Don was required to put in dry sewer at the time, which he did do. So, we went to Mayor Lauritsen and said, we're still in this agreement period here, I guess we were until last year, actually, what's the city going to do about this? And that's when the sewer went in. And Jeff and I were half in a septic and hopefully, in the sewer, and I just wonder, has the council read all these documents? And in conjunction with Maurice's comment about the CID, if we did enter into that back in 2002, the sewer and the water and the water tank, that's what all that money was supposed to go for, and where was it spent? And why should the citizens be being asked to pay for it now? Which is what I think I read in the ordinance for the impact. I wish we could discuss that first before we made comment because I'm not really sure I understand the whole thing about being able to look back and assess previous and whatnot. So, my comment is just having to do with the two development agreements that Bushnell signed and Meacham signed and the city signed, that specifically talked about each party doing certain things, and some of them weren't done. I guess that's why the city sued Bushnell. I'm not totally sure, but there was some breach of contract, yeah. And Don donating all the land to the city, the switchbacks, the parks, the whatever. It's great agreement. And I would ask that going forward, that the development agreements that we entered into, that we follow them, that we adhere, we both agree to do certain things, the city and whoever the developer is, so that we're not having to go back and stir the pot and perhaps create bad feelings when, if we'd adhered to our end of the agreement, maybe we wouldn't be here today.
Thanks, Sherri. And I actually have some comment on that. I, you know, I know that there is some history, and I'm the first to admit, I don't know all the implications as far as actually realizing any money from what promises were made. I'm not aware of any. There may have been some obligation on the part of a prior developer, but, I mean, that ship has sailed. And to me, it's about the households that are getting the value of that sewer connection. I mean, so, it's either those households pay it, or everybody pays it on behalf of those households. And so, in my mind, the fair thing is for the property that is getting the benefit of it, should pay that fee to make that connection. So, now, if there is some incident, you know, there was a big pot of money that was improperly spent, then that's a different matter.
No, I'm not saying that, yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of that. I have no reason to think that's the case, but I also can't, you know, sit here and say there's no way that happened. But in my mind, ultimately, it's about who should bear the burden of such expenses, and I just think that the property owner that is getting the benefit of that sewer line should bear that burden, as opposed to the residents at large, because that's really, those are the two options. So, either the property owner pays it, or it gets passed on to everybody through either legal battles or through tax increases. And so, that's where I sit on that issue. But I, I'm certainly sympathetic to what you're saying, and yeah, I mean, in hindsight, there's probably a lot of things that would have and could have been done.
Well, there are, and I guess that's a concern that I have in the ordinances that are proposed. I think the way I read them was for water and sewer, that we can turn the clock back and assess residents. Like, I know what I paid for water on my impact fee, and it was a lot. And my neighbors around me didn't pay that, but yet, they have use of the water. Are they going to be retroactively charged, the same thing that I was charged because they have use of the water? I don't know if that argument holds up. If it does, it applies to a lot of different things, not just sewer.
Well, I think, you know, again, I'm, and the idea behind an impact fee is it's a way for the city to collect money on residents who don't already exist, who are going to build in the future, but are benefiting from some kind of an improvement that you're making now.
Correct.
So, for instance, when we put in the brand-new water tank, which is now the old water tank, but nevertheless, at that time, it was brand-new, that was assessed a fee, and that was why a lot of the impact fees went up dramatically, was when the water tank went in. I'll be honest, I didn't have to pay that because I built before that.
Right.
So, I was paying property taxes for the water, and I was paying water fees instead of paying an impact fee for that water. So, it kind of depends on when you bought, what were the impact fees at that time, and then that's how it gets assessed. Now, I think that the concern over the sewer line was that that was dubbed as a connection fee, which, again, that was well before anyone on this council or mayor were a part of this, and that's been deemed not the right way to do it. And so, now, we're kind of trying to make it right by going back and saying, okay, let's do this study, let's find out exactly how much we should have been doing, and then we're going to do our best to make it right. So, that's, that's a different, that's a different ballgame. But the water impact fee, that's the reason why you might have paid more than I.
Right, oh, I understand that. That's why I wonder about the regress in going back, and if in these development agreements, the way Jeff and I read them when we went to Mayor Lauritsen was, this is the city's responsibility.
Yeah.
And that's how the connection got made, because they deemed at the time that that was the city's responsibility. It should have been done a long time ago, and we're going to do it now.
But Sherri, you are talking about sewer connection, right? Not water?
Yeah, did I say water?
No, no, I just want to make sure that.
I could have, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about sewer.
Which one, because we're kind of doing multiple things, so.
Right, it was sewer, and, because we were, I don't want to make this personal, because this isn't about me, this is about the community and going forward, and I'd just like to see us have development agreements like we do now with Summit Creek and, I don't know about Four Seasons. But if you have these things in place and you follow what's in the agreement, we don't have battles over gates, we don't have, you know, we're not looking back.
Very much agree with you there.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you'll find any disagreement on that. I mean, we're trying to become more sophisticated in our operations as a city moving forward.
Well, I applaud everything that you're doing, and I'm not making, I don't want to make this personal tonight because I'm a member of the community, and personally, I would bring my things to you on an individual basis, not before the council.
Yeah, no, and your point is well-taken, and we appreciate you sharing it, so.
Thanks.
Unless anybody else has anything? All right, thanks, Sherri. Erin, I think you're next.
Wanted to let you know a couple of things that I'm working on.
Yeah, this is for the impact fee. Are you working on an impact fee?
Like, come back in.
Hey, but if you'd like to donate to our impact fees, we'd be happy to accept that donation.
So, Erin, you can come back at item 21, which is the public comment period, so just.
Yeah, relax.
Standby.
But we definitely want to hear it.
For sure.
All right. Anybody else here that cares to comment on impact fee? Do we have anybody online? I guess Brian's it, so if Brian doesn't have a comment, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the work session. Okay, and so now, we get the meat of the impact fee analysis by our city engineer, fire chief, extraordinaire, Ted Mickelson.
I'm going to be quick because Cody's the guy that really knows all the stuff about impact fee law.
Okay.
So, he'll be able to answer all your great questions, but I'm just going to talk about generally the process, and then I'm going to let him get into the meat of it real quick to present this. So, just for the benefit of some of the questions that were being asked, the way we typically go about the impact fee process is, the city goes through developing, as you know, capital facilities plans. The capital facilities plans for the water and wastewater systems, they set a level of service for the city. And they also identify, if any, existing deficiencies in the city, in the system. And so, we look at that, and then we also look at growth, you know, what growth's going to happen in the city, and then what infrastructure is it going to take to support that growth? And that infrastructure that it takes to support growth, we develop a cost for, and that cost is used to generate the impact fee, and goes into what Cody does, the impact fee analysis. Now, that cost has to be a city-born cost, not a developer cost. If it's paid for by the developer, it's not impact fee eligible. If it's paid for by the city, whether it be a future cost, or whether it be being reimbursed for costs the city has already borne, that develop, that people that are going to build will take, will be able to take advantage of, the city is eligible to be reimbursed for those costs. In other words, they're reimbursing the residents that kind of put that cost up front, and so, future residents are reimbursing those costs. So, the cost is generated by the improvements that the city will bear to support development and growth. So, those costs are all put together, and then they go into an impact fee analysis, which Cody will talk a bit about, and that's what generates the impact fee. The impact fee is meant to, a cost to development, right? So, typically, paid for to developers or people building that are reimbursing the city for a cost the city has already borne. And the city has, I think, six years to spend any impact fees collected towards an improvement that's identified needed, that's going to be needed for that growth, or they can reimburse themselves immediately. So, that's kind of the process we go about developing how infrastructure becomes impact fee eligible, if it's to support growth or reimburse the city for costs already borne. And then we look at all those that are going to benefit from that improvement, right? And that's the total number of what we call ERCs or connections, equivalent residential connections. And those that will benefit from that improvement basically give you up the cost to repay the city for a cost that, for that cost the city has borne, or they will give that money to the city, which can then go into a fund to be saved for future improvements that's going to be needed to support development, right? And all those costs go into this impact fee analysis. So, that's just the general approach to how impact fees are, how we go about looking at impact fees. Cody will talk a little bit more about the specific impact fee. This is all very state law-driven. Impact fees, there is state law that governs how we develop impact fees and what cities can and can't do, and, because sometimes our comments, you know, we should do this or do that, but it really, the state kind of governs how this process can happen, right? Which Cody knows a lot more about than me. So, so, as on the engineering side, we do the, we identify the improvements needed to support growth, or those that have already been paid for by the city, that future growth will benefit from, and then we pass those costs on to go into the impact fee analysis. So, that's kind of what we do on the engineering side. I'm going to let Cody, who's much smarter than me on this impact fee stuff, talk, unless you have any questions for me.
As a citizen, I am a little unclear, even knowing, whether a, an improvement was paid for by the developer or by the city. In my experience on the council, Summit Creek Road, that property was bought and paid for by the city because I knew about it, how it was arranged and so on, but how, how, again, speak a little slower and explain to me, impact fees, whether related to developer costed and paid for, or, or city paid for?
So, if the developer paid for the improvement, it's not impact fee eligible, because an impact fee is to reimburse, in short, it's reimbursing the city, or, which in effect is the citizens, for costs that they took to support future development. So, if a developer pays that cost, then it's not impact fee eligible.
So, that's why a road is not, it was paid for by the developer?
It was paid for by the developer, so it's not impact fee eligible.
That, that makes total sense, okay.
And for example, tonight, we're talking about the sewer line that was, that was city essentially paid for.
So, the city paid the developer to put it in?
The city paid the contractor to put it in.
Okay.
Kind of, but, the sewer line that goes from Summit, down Summit Creek Drive, the city did not pay for it.
Well, the developer paid.
Developer paid, so that portion, we can't, we can't add into the calculus.
Right.
The part on Loafer Drive, we can, because that's what we did pay for.
Right, so the city paid for that. In effect, the city used tax dollars, or citizens' tax dollars to pay for that sewer line, right? Including those that live in the community. So, what they're saying is those that are going to be building here, future citizens or future development, have to repay that cost to those that live here, because they're not benefiting from that sewer, right? Those that build along it are benefiting from it. So, essentially, that sewer line, because the city paid for it and is supporting growth, is impact fee eligible. Now, the water system, we identified a water tank that will be needed within probably the next five years, and because that water tank that's needed is needed to support what growth will be happening, that is an impact fee eligible expense if the city builds that water tank. So, we've included that in the water impact fee, so the city can start collecting money now from developers. So, when that tank needs to be built in five years, we've collected money, and then it can also go towards repaying the debt service that the city incurs if they take out a loan or whatever to build the tank. Then impact fees can be used to repay that debt service back, right? So, in short, if the city pays for it and is supporting future growth or development, it is impact fee eligible. If a developer pays for it, when they build a development, it is not impact fee eligible.
That helps, thanks.
Ted, can it reach back, though? You're saying it cannot reach back, it's only forward-looking, or it can reach back to expenses that the city incurred?
Yes. Cody knows about that, because you incurred the cost, right? So, it's a reimbursement when you're looking backwards to the city.
I just want to make sure, because when you said it was for forward-looking, I just want to make sure it also reaches back.
Right, and so, the process we're going through right now to adopt these impact fees is a, it's sort of, it's the state law process, right, is what we're going through, which, which I think is what we're trying to do now, is bring this back and follow that, what is required by the state to adopt an impact fee.
And Sherri and Maurice, I know that this might spark some questions for both of you, so why don't we hear the full presentation, and then we can come back to you if you want to ask more pointed questions.
And I'll let Cody talk a little bit more about the, the impact fees and what the law process is for the impact fees.
Thanks, Ted. Ted was very thorough, so I won't take a lot of time. I'll just talk about the specific improvements that are included in the impact fee. So, on the water side, there are really two major improvements that are being included in the impact fee. One is a historic cost and one is a future cost. So, the historic cost is the well that was, what's the name of this well? The Broad, the Broad Hollow Tank Well, that was built, what, in 2014, I believe? And so, that total cost was $920,000, and you can also include the cost of the interest on the bonds that were used to fund that project. So, in total, $1.2 million to build the well and for the interest carry cost, and that serves nine hun, just 902 connections. So, that's how we generate the impact fee, is how many connections can it serve? And then 411 of those connections are connections that are in the future. So, that's the excess capacity that you have in that well, and so, that impact fee portion for that well is $1,373. That's split between the actual well and the debt service that you're paying. And then the second piece is the future-looking, which is what Ted mentioned, the 250,000-gallon tank that will be built in the next six years, which will be about $1 million, and will serve a total of 264 connections. 57 of those are deficiencies, that you're not currently meeting your storage requirement, and so, you'll need to build that tank, and then there'll be 207 excess connections available for future growth. So, that portion of the impact fee will be $3,894. So, a total of $5,267 is the total impact fee for water. Now, once you get to that spot and you build the tank, it, it won't cost $1,028,000, it's going to cost more or less than that. So, once we know that cost and it's specifically finalized, or if you include debt for some reason and need to include interest, then we'll update the impact fee at that time. But right now, this is the best information we have, and that's what the statute requires, is the best information we have.
And they are updated about every five years, recommended, is that?
Yeah, at least every five years. So, what we are going to do, Ted and Jody and I, will meet every year and review the plan and review the growth projections, and make sure that the capital facility plan and growth projections are continuing on the path that we currently estimate. If something happens every year that would, in any given year, that makes us feel like, hey, something's different than we thought, we need to build new infrastructure, or development goes much quicker than we thought, then we will adjust and redo the impact fee at that time. But until, you know, that time, we'll just keep looking at it every year. Yes, councilman?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you mentioned that we would review every five years or so, and you actually mentioned meeting yearly.
Yeah.
Which I think that's probably sufficient. Let's say in three years...
Let's say in three years, we actually build the well. So at that time, we know exactly how much it costs. We know what the debt service is, et cetera. That would seem to be the right time to do one of those, um, updates immediately when, when that happens.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Unless, unless costs are so close that it's, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's within 1%, we probably won't worry about it.
So again, if we do that, in three years from now, we, we get all, all that nailed down, there's always a, a case where citizens could have been overpaying. I mean, that, I don't think that'll happen, um, but it could.
Yes.
What do you do about those?
It's, it's, it's the prerogative of the city, but the, the statute does not require the city to go back and adjust it.
There's not a year term that they go back on. So like the ones that built closest to the tank being built, there's not a year floating around that that rebates or?
No.
Okay.
The statute says you have a year from the day you pay your impact fee to protest the calculation of the impact fee. So, uh, I suppose the argument could be made that they overpaid and, and you could, but, but generally what we're talking about is there was an error made, like in the, in the mathematical calculation. Uh, you may choose, like you're, it sounds like you're thinking now to reimburse for other reasons than statutory reasons, and you can always do that.
What, uh, is the inflation percentage used in these calculations?
Uh, I don't remember. Ted, did you add an inflationary figure in the million for the tank?
We, we generally, uh, that's a tough one because we never know exactly what year it's going to be built. So when we inflate prices, we usually add about 15% contingency, sometimes 20, just depending on market. To account for, you know, that would give us, it used to give us, you know, five to six, seven years of inflation.
It was like a week. Or six months, yeah.
But we were having about a 10% growth in construction pricing for a while and it's now pretty much a level of law. It's not drop at all. But we try and add, you know, contingency in there for that. And that's always tough. And that's why sometimes we'll, we've got to come back and update this every so often. That's one thing we're looking at, where are we at now on costs? We need to update those.
Thank you.
And I, I, Doral, to your comment, I also think that it's, I mean, and I think that you said this perfectly. It's the best information we have when those calculations are made. And I don't think we want to get in the business. I mean, the, the sewer connection fee is kind of a unique animal, but I don't think we want to get in the business of trying to go back and refund impact fees if they were too much. I mean, I think it's just, we do the best we can with what we have and, and leave it at that.
I think the thing that's different, um, now, we have done studies in the past, but I've never seen anything like this.
Well, I feel like it's a bank floating loans, you know?
This, this is a much better, more in-depth analysis than I've ever seen.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, if we, if we continue to use this model, I think we can fairly tell our residents, look, we are following the law. We're doing exactly what we're supposed to do with impact fees. And we don't have to worry about, you know, somebody just throwing a dart at a number saying, huh, that's what I feel like it should be.
You gotta step up.
The old man.
Yeah.
Is that fire chief?
Yeah, only about another year left.
Not the weakest among us.
I, I will say this one is, is agreeably a little bit of an anomaly. I would say majority of the time, impact fees over time go up. Very rarely do we see them come back down because costs very, not to say they don't, but typically costs are inflating over time. And so your impact fees are generally going up over time if you're doing the analysis as, as the state requires. So rarely do we have a case where you're going to be refunding because impact fees will most likely be going up over time. This was, was kind of a rare one and something we don't see a lot of, right?
Great. Thank you. Jody?
Microphone.
We have had a comprehensive study of the water back in 2002. LEI did a water impact fee study. Um, and we also did a one again in, um, by Bruce Hall around 2007. And it was pretty much in depth. I'm sure Cody's looked at those. And so it, we have, it's not that we've been neglectful in doing them, they have been done.
Oh, thank you. Okay, uh, so Cody and Ted, do, do you, do you want, I mean, that was kind of a bundled together sewer and water. I, I don't know if you have any other, uh, information?
So, so just maybe high level, what it is that you're adopting. You, you're adopting an ordinance that will put into place the water and sewer impact. Well, they're separate, so one for the water and one for the sewer. It establishes the, the rate that you're charging. It establishes if someone is an odd, uh, connection. So if a, a business, for example, came in and said, I don't necessarily think I fit the pattern of a, because we're, we're, we're using the term ERC, equivalent residential connection. So we're trying to make everything equivalent to a residential connection. If a business comes in and says, I, my usage pattern is very different. I'm not going to use really any water at all, or I'm going to use a whole bunch of water. There's a way to calculate what their impact fee should be. It also establishes the process if someone wants to challenge the, the way in which the impact fee was adopted or the methodology that was utilized to calculate the impact fee. There's a way in which they can formally, uh, you know, ask for a refund or, or say that we object to the impact fee. So that's what you're doing. And you're also stating that you'll follow the state statutes, uh, in calculating the impact fee and that you'll keep track of the balance of, in an impact fee account that's segregated, which, uh, you're already currently doing and reporting that amount to the state auditor's office every year. So those are the things that you're doing in that impact fee. The final thing is that you establish the effective date, that today you're adopting the impact fee, if that's what you choose to do, and then it's 90 days until that impact fee is, is effective. So it establishes that effective date.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well done.
If you'll stay put, does the council have any questions beyond what has already been asked? If you don't mind, can Sherry, Maurice, do you have something that you'd care to ask? But you got to speak into the microphone, please.
I guess I'm unsure. I, I think I know what an impact fee is, but I always thought it was like for a new person building. I think maybe I'm confusing impact fee and assessment now when you put in the ordinance that you can look back. And am I going to be charged an impact fee for water? Or are all the citizens in Woodland Hills going to be charged an impact fee for water looking back towards a new well because we're all going to benefit from it?
Well, you, you've already been connected, right? We're just talking new connections. So sewer is a different situation for you because there was a fee and, and there's some disagreement as to whether it should be paid. But yeah, there would not be anything that would apply to anybody that's already connected to either water or sewer.
Okay. Yay. Um, the other thing that I would ask you to look at before you vote on this tonight is, and it has to do with the SID. If I understand Ted correctly, the city cannot pose an impact fee on monies paid by the developer. And I believe Don Meacham paid a million dollars in that SID and the city paid too. So the calculation that you're basing whatever it is that you want us to pay off of is assuming that the city had the full responsibility. And I'm not sure what the money was spent on in 2002, if it, because that's when the development agreement was, it said the city would do their portion and Don would do his. I think the SID followed a year later, 2003 maybe. So if you look at that first, before you vote tonight, that you want to impose this impact fee on the residents that it applies to, I think that might be applicable.
Two million for what and one million for what?
It was the SID, the Special Improvement District that we entered into in 2002.
Jody?
Yeah, Jody's got some.
She's got the info.
So in 2002, Don Meacham acquired, decided to go ahead and take over, uh, Daryl and Dan Bushnell's development agreement. But he needed to have SID in order to put in the improvements. The city didn't pay for any of the improvements that were installed in Thousand Oaks. Instead, he did an SID that went along with the sale of each individual lot. Portion of those improvements, yes, included a sewer line that went in portions of the Thousand Oaks subdivision. But as we know, some of Thousand Oaks subdivision is downhill. He only had to do a dry line. He didn't have to do anything more than install that dry line, which he did, and the laterals. So there was portions of Thousand Oaks that could connect because it was gravity fed, right? And easy, the line was there and they didn't have anything, you know, uh, obstructing them from being able to connect to the sewer. There are portions of plat A of Thousand Oaks and plat B of Thousand Oaks that the only way they could have a line connected was to install that line on Lofer Drive, which was done by Dan and Daryl Bushnell. Don wasn't required to install that line because that line, that, those homes already existed. That's where we came into having to put in this line. And the city was able to assess a connection fee to put in this line that would connect a certain portion of Thousand Oaks plat A and plat B to the sewer.
Thanks, Jody.
So maybe just in, in quick answer to that, impact fee is really fairly simplistic. Um, so the eligible expense for the city is the actual cost to the city, right? Regardless of whatever agreements there are between the developer and the city, whatever cost the city bore is what the city is eligible to collect an impact fee for. So when we looked at this impact fee for the sewer, we looked at the actual construction cost to install that line that the city bore, right? And I don't remember what the dollar number was right now, but this, whatever the city paid out to put that in is what's eligible. Um, and that's really all we look at. And that's, that's what, uh, the impact fee allows us, requires us to do.
Nothing to do with the two million or the one million. It's literally the cost for the pipe and the fixing of the road from on West Lofer to connect it into Summit Creek. That is the cost that we're asking an impact fee for.
Correct. Exactly. Just that cost is all we can ask for a cost back. So we're basically reimbursing the citizens for the costs of, the exact cost of installing. So we looked at the actual construction cost to put that sewer line in, and that's where the impact fee came from. But I, so, what's that? It's 315,000. So that's the cost the city paid the contractor to put that in. And so that's the cost that's eligible for an impact fee.
And I think what Sherry's point is though, if, and I'm not trying to speak for you, but it, but if we did get a big chunk of money, then that would offset that cost, right?
Well, but it depends on what that money was for.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's where it gets a little bit tricky because if you can track where, if, if that money that you received was used to install this sewer line and is developer funded in, in, in a short, then yeah, it's not impact fee eligible. But if the city paid the cost out of your city funds, this, yeah, sewer fund or general fund, however it's paid for, but sewer fund, then it is impact fee eligible.
See, and that's, that's what I'm unclear on is what was the two million for? What was the one million for? And if it was for other parts of the development, whether that be, um, the roads, the, you know, just the right to develop, I mean, whatever, I don't know what it was, was for.
Right.
Then that's kind of in a different bucket. It's not the same pool. Anyway.
No, fair point.
Yeah. So you'd have to actually be able to track that cost and say, yes, we did use part of that for this sewer. But if you can't track that, um, short of, they, they, you know, they really try not to make this too overly complicated, right? So whatever it actually costs the city is what you're eligible to be reimbursed for.
Okay. Well, if it turns out that we need to take a third swing at this, then we'll take a third swing at this. But, uh, I, it sounds like we do need to get that information and figure out where that went.
I, yeah, I, I know this is no excuse, but I'd just like to remind everybody that, you know, when all of that was happening, we were still holding, uh, city council meetings down at Salem Elementary. Um, we didn't have a city office. All of our city records were being held in somebody's extra room. I mean, the city's come a long ways.
Yeah.
From what we were. And again, it's not an excuse. We should always follow the law and we should always strive to follow the law. I think that's really critically important. But I also think it's useless for us to, um, denigrate in any way prior, um, people who have held our seats because they were doing the best they could with what they had. We're doing the best we can with what we have. And that's kind of the way that communities work, especially growing communities. And we are absolutely a growth community. And we're not the same, to Sherry's point, we do not run the city the same way today that we did 20 years ago when I had to drop off my house plans at some dude's house in American Fork in a bucket outside of his garage. I mean, that's how it was. So it's totally different now, and I think we're definitely trying to do things the right way.
And I, I would say that with this money, I mean, if it's not clearly designated, I mean, that, that would be, I mean, if it's something that is more of a general payment, assuming, you know, I mean, I don't know what the records will, will play out to, to reveal, but I, I would say that if it's not clearly tied to something that would offset that cost, then we shouldn't treat it as an offset.
Yep.
Okay. Well, um, Maurice?
So the document that has the Special Improvement District clearly specifies what it's for. There's a section in it that says this is for, and it includes sewer. So it does include more, includes water and other infrastructure.
Do we know who got the money though? Uh, that's the thing, I'm not, I'm also not sure. I mean, it just, because the contract says, it doesn't mean that it was ever paid.
And you'd have to identify that it was specifically spent on this sewer line.
Right.
That section.
Right.
Could it have been to connect into Payson?
Right. That's where your records should come in, right?
If we have them.
You should.
You're right, we should, but I can't make up records that happened 20 years ago.
Right.
So if we have them.
But I'm saying, I'm saying you should have them, right? Why, why would you discard critical records?
We wouldn't. But again, as I just got done saying, the city wasn't always run this way. Where we keep records the way we do today. We didn't have this building. We didn't have a place for records. Um, when Mayor, uh, Harding.
Right.
Was no longer mayor, he literally handed the next mayor a couple of boxes of papers.
Right.
And it wasn't all the records, but that's what he had kept. So again, we can't go back and define what they were.
My concern is not that, is simply that you be fair to us.
I agree. I agree with you there.
And I'm not looking for, you know, water or other issues. My, my concern is simply with an $11,000 fee, Thousand Oaks subdivision, uh, which I'm a part of. And, um, and I'm just asking you to be fair with it and to ask you to review and follow up on reading that SID, which, which has details in it, very good detail.
Yeah.
Um, my other comment is just how do I, do I need to apply now? Or how do, who's going to follow up to make sure that we have that opportunity and don't miss a statute of limitations?
Right. No, it, it will be clear. I mean, you'll get a letter and so it, it should be abundantly clear as to when that clock starts ticking.
If we get to that point where if you haven't filed yet, I'll knock on your door.
Thank you.
I'll give you two days ahead. If we haven't heard from you, I'll go pound on your door and say, Maurice, you need to file it now.
30 minutes.
I'll hold you to that.
Give you 30 minutes.
I'll hold you to that.
You'll see.
Thank you.
Everybody will.
All right. Any other comments or questions then? All right. Then we can move on to item three. Back to you.
Thank you.
Ted, yep, West Lofer Drive?
Um, I don't know that we really got it.
Thank you. You too. Tell your answer, guys.
Yeah, I know. He was my, he was my, he was watching my back. Now I'm a little nervous sitting with my back to the audience. Um, so really West Lofer Drive, we really don't have a, a whole lot of update. We're working through the design. Other than to say, uh, in looking at this design, I think the next critical step is that we meet with a nearby property owner because it has some pretty big impacts on him. So we're working to get that arranged. And I think we've got enough information to sit down with him. So we're working to get that arranged, and I think we've got enough information to sit down with him in pulling all the data from the previous engineering company that was working on it, so.
Which property owner?
Glenn Anderson.
Because I know there was some impact to what I'm going to call the Mick Hill property.
Right.
It wasn't as much as Glenn. You're right, Glenn has the majority of the impact, but Mick had some as well. So we might want to meet with both of them and whether that's separate or together, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, good comment. There is some, I think some fill or something that goes over into that property line. Um, I think at the time Mick was very agreeable to that because he was excited to have a place to be able to back his trailer up when he backs in and stuff, so. But the new property owners, I'm not sure, but it'd be good to review with them.
We had talked about the city being able to purchase what LEI called a grading easement. I think that's what it's called, anyway, onto their property because we were going to end up putting material on their property. Well, we already have. We've already done that to Glenn. So anyway, we, we actually did meet regarding that with Glenn and Mick. And more or less had what I would call a gentleman's agreement, but nothing was ever written down. And it wasn't finalized because we didn't have final designs. So we didn't know how much of an impact it was going to be. Glenn communicated what he would like to see. And then they were supposed to go off and design it so that it would meet those requirements, but we never got to that next step, so.
Yeah, and I, I think they got a portion of that. Understand of, of what he would like to see in there. I'm not sure if it's all of it, but I agree because I think we need to sit down with both the property owners, go over this, see what they're willing to agree to. And then we'll, we'll need to, after that following that, and we'll need to formalize an easement with them. Either an easement or some exchange there in order to have, impact their property. So, so that's the next step. That's where we're at.
Okay, thanks Ted. Alright, item four, proposed resolution approving the loan for the fire truck. Chris?
Yes, sorry about that. Let me get my screen on here. So we have the, the paperwork, I believe it's been sent out to you guys regarding the new fire truck. It will be done on June thirteenth. They'll go through testing on June fourteenth and fifteenth. Tickets are being purchased now, not with city funds, to fly out to three individuals from the fire department that will be driving the truck back that week sometime June fifteenth. The information on the truck, let me just pull it up here for you real quick. As far as the, the nuts and bolts, we're looking at borrowing. Oh, yeah, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents at a rate of four point seven nine over basically ten years. It'll be ten, ten payments over that time period. There is a couple minor tweaks that our attorney is recommending, mainly the big one is with the letter he has to sign as the attorney for the city within Hills to indicate that he's reviewed it. But he has contacted Zion's Bank directly to work on that with them. And then, let me see, one other comment here. Jody, remind me, was that the only one that you had seen back from Craig?
Uh, yeah, just on page six, we needed to check a box, box A. We need to have our insurance documents provided before entering into this agreement and get them off to Zion's. And the rest is just concerns Craig had with the acknowledgement letter that was, he was going to sign.
We now have the VIN number so I can go ahead and order the insurance and we are exempt, I believe, from arbitrage because it's not going to be a big enough amount. So yeah, we can put a check mark there. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward boilerplate lease that Zion's puts together multiple times per month. They would just like a resolution indicating that the council is in favor of it, and then we'll get everything starting to be funded.
And that, that council approval will basically be subject to city attorney approval, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Item five, FlockSafety.com. Doral?
Is, is the representative from Flock Safety here? That's you. And Aaron also knows a lot about this. And we, we kind of need to listen and see if this product is something that suits and can help our city. So we appreciate you both being here tonight. And I, go ahead, I'd like to hear from you.
Well, I was super excited to get the opportunity to come out here. And I, my, my parents actually live, I counted, they live six houses away from Woodland Hills in Salem. I, we're that close. In fact, they were looking at some properties in Woodland Hills and, you know, buying at the very, very top of the market. And, you know, there were some limitations there, right?
Maybe we can add some or something.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put a cabinet. But I appreciate the time. I'm going to be relatively brief. If, if you guys are, are interested, I can always get you more information. But the story behind Flock is that we actually started working with neighborhoods. What happened is our founder had some break-ins and some things that were happening in the neighborhood. And the police department came to them and they said, look, we really need to get a license plate. They didn't have a license plate. They couldn't really get a license plate. And so they looked into license plate reading technology. And they were able to find some quotes, but they were hundreds of thousands of dollars. It was very expensive, prohibitively so. And so what happened with Flock is he developed a way to take photos using an Android tablet. Just imagine putting your phone out there, taking photos based on motion. And then they developed some machine learning around what we call a vehicle fingerprint. And so we worked in neighborhoods for about two years. Twenty nineteen, we started working with law enforcement. We, we went very, very fast with law enforcement. We had over a thousand customers in our first year, and our retention rate has been about two hundred percent. So we're working with twenty-seven or so agencies between Nephi and North Ogden. So many, many agencies in the area are actually customers of Flock. Either they already have cameras put in or they will be getting cameras put in. We've done things in the area like Springville has some of our cameras that they got. A guy who is a porch pirate, they were able to identify the vehicle using what we call a vehicle fingerprint. The Spanish Fork homicide, they were able to catch their suspect out in Colorado with a network that they use. And so what our cameras do is, is really three things, and then I'll tell you what they don't do. So the first thing is they connect to a database that the sheriff's office has access to called the NCI. See, it's an FBI database and it carries things on it like stolen vehicles, stolen plates, wanted felons, dangerous folks where if they come into the area, it can alert law enforcement with a text and a notification, hey, you have somebody potentially nefarious in the area. You might want to go, you know, typically they steal vehicles to like go do other crimes, right? And that would be a bad day. The second thing that they do is they provide evidence when something bad has happened and it wasn't in a flagged vehicle by the FBI. So in the case of Springville, when they had their, their porch pirate debacle, they ended up having to identify that based off of what we call a vehicle fingerprint. So our AI looks at a vehicle, assigns a fingerprint to it based on features, and then is able to identify that vehicle in the network in other areas. Those are all things that have been really, really helpful in stopping crime all across Utah. We've had anything from homicides to kids being abducted, literally stopped with these cameras. But one thing that we thought was really important because of where we came from was privacy. And so our cameras are a lot different than any other system like ours and the fact that we are privacy focused first. So we only keep our data for thirty days. It's actually the town or the, yeah, it's the town's data essentially. It only stays for thirty days on a rolling basis. The only way to access that is when law enforcement has a reason to search either an incident number or a case number. So to find a vehicle that's suspected of doing something, there has to be some type of suspected of doing something. You can't just go watch. It's photos, it's not video. And we found that, and there's an audit trail that, that they, that essentially holds them accountable to the reasons why they're searching for things within the system. But the end result is that these are relatively inexpensive cameras. We can put them up on major ingress points to the town and be able to, when something goes, goes wrong from a criminal standpoint, be able to find, you know, find the suspects and be able to hold them accountable. The other thing that we've been able to do that's been really effective is also on the side of like Amber Alerts and Missing People. So I, my parents may live in Salem. I live in Arizona, so I'm going to take off here in a second, go catch a flight back home. But in Arizona, like we just recently had a fourteen-year-old girl who actually made it all the way to, from Wyoming down to Arizona who was taken. We're able to, to recover and, and we have many, many news stories across Wasatch, Wasatch Front. We've been very, very successful. And so the idea behind these cameras is that they can help amplify your, your law enforcement presence because your law enforcement, the county can't be here all the time. They can't watch who's in and out all the time. But this would provide a way for them to get early indications if people are here. And when something happens, they're able to more easily find a suspect.
Go ahead, I don't want to.
No, that's, that, that, that was as much spielish as I get, so what, what questions do you guys have?
Then it's more focused on vehicles than people. Is that right?
We, we have our, a primary product is a license plate reader. We also have a camera that is the same cost, it's powered. That can be an IP camera that can be used in a traditional sense in terms of, in terms of active monitoring and recording. It keeps recordings for slightly less. It's about seven days worth of recording. But we do have that option. So if you were looking at, at like securing a building or something of that nature, we have solutions for that as well.
I don't know if you're familiar with the problems we have in, around our city, but we have some critical points like our water tanks. And we only have two entrances and exits to our city, so that's probably good. Three, one, two.
Summit Creek.
No, Summit Creek and Woodland Hills Drive. Do you have another one?
Willie's Reed, Willie Reed Road.
Willow Reed Road.
Yeah, yes, we do. I live on that one. Okay.
Wow, you don't look at it like an entrance.
Good. Yeah, I just learned something, yeah.
My biggest question is kind of along the lines of what Doral's asking is weather sensitivity. I mean,
Yeah.
We're not talking about a building. We're talking about something mounted outside. You know, it's, we have all kinds of weather. It's not Arizona, it's not blazing hot. But we definitely have the extreme. We have really cold weather and then we have really warm weather.
Smoky, hot, windy days.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that, that would be my biggest question. I get, and, and I guess that's the question I have, you know, being, being kind of a technical, technical guy. Is your solution more focused on the software that does the AI and does the detection? Or is it more focused on the actual hardware that does the shooting of the, the camera stuff?
Yeah, it actually does a little bit of, of both. So primarily, we came out with the AI to be able to do the vehicle fingerprint. That's really kind of where we cut our teeth and we've, we've realized law enforcement needs something called a real-time crime center where we can go and like have people see cameras at the same time as LPR hits, at the same time as where's our officers located for officer safety and things like that. So we've, we've definitely approached that market and we've, we've done really, really well there. To answer your question though, like we have cameras, we, we started in Utah, I think Ogden was our first customer, and they started with ten cameras. They were LPRs. Now they have forty-three. We've, Spanish Fork doesn't have cameras installed yet, neither does Provo, but they both come onboard. Santaquin has some cameras, things like that. But to answer your question, we've had cameras here for over a few years and, and they're doing great. And the difference between us and maybe other companies is that we're a service. You guys don't have to hire an engineer or someone to go take care of a camera. It's something that we go and install and take care of for you on an ongoing basis. This camera here is our LPR, and there's literally a battery inside of it. And you mentioned, I mean, obviously winter weather. I've, I've been sledding here, probably in Woodland Hills with the kids at Christmas, right? Like, long story short, the batteries can freeze. And so as we started to expand outside of like Georgia and Texas and some other place, and California, we had to get into, like, how do we keep batteries warm when it's, you know, when we're in Chicago? Like, that's a challenge, right? And so we have some proprietary ways of, of doing that with, with the system. So this is a solar panel powered. It's a relatively small solar panel, a couple of them stacked together like that on the top of a pole with a cellular unit inside. It keeps it going all year round. The IP camera, the one that you might want focused on like a water tank, that one would be powered. And so because it's powered, it doesn't, with a hundred twenty volt, it doesn't necessarily have some of the challenges that the license plate readers have. But if you were to get all the ingress points, all three of your ingress points, you would have essentially any vehicle that came into the area. Jup County has, has these as well. They're talking about putting some out by their critical infrastructure like the power plant, right? Because like what if a, you know, what if there's an attack out there of some sorts? Like, we want to be able to hopefully prevent that, but at worst, respond quickly to it. And so that's a long answer to your question, but yes, they hold up very, very well in the heat, in the cold, in the wind, in the water. They're meant to be outside. We don't do indoor cameras today.
And the other question I would have is, you know, you talk about IP cameras. So how do we get the, how do we get the connection? What type of connection do you expect? And what's the bandwidth requirements, that kind of thing?
It's a, it's a fair question. So the IP cameras themselves are constantly recording. And then when you go to connect them, you can connect them unlimited, and it's essentially on demand. So you have a user portal where you're able to go into a, it's our, it's our portal that even the law enforcement use. And you can literally click on that location and it pulls up a video. You can put that onto a video wall. There's all sorts of things you can do with that. But we're not utilizing fiber or any type of ethernet connection. That's all done over the air through, through radio. And we have a bunch of partners that, in terms of cellular service, so we always have a great connection there.
Okay, you're basically using some kind of cellular
Mm-hmm.
Connection, okay.
Yep. Yeah, there's literally a cell unit in, in, in both our, our IP camera, our LPR cameras and, and our gunshot detectors actually. So they all have their own, their own cell units and communicate with each other.
What do you do with vandalism? If people are, are coming, because we've used like trail cams and things in the past and they tend to walk away. You know, what are you, what's your policies, you know, procedures, plans that, that take that into account?
Yeah, it's, it's very rare for them to go walking away because when we put these license plate readers up, they're, they're, and the IP cameras are even higher. But the shortest equipment that we put up is usually about ten feet in the air. So it's very difficult to get to. So we don't typically run into that. Between Utah and Arizona, the only incident that I'm aware of today, it is one in Arizona, a much more densely populated area where a gentleman brought a truck, backed it up to a camera, put an A-frame ladder in the back, went and took the camera, and we have pictures of face truck license plate. And unfortunately for, for that gentleman, I don't know why he was stealing. I think it had something to do with like, thought there was some sort of value to it. Obviously, there's, there's not. It's a brick if you aren't connected to anything. And it's a battery and a, a pretty camera lens. But he also didn't realize that it has a cell unit inside of it, so that came with some GPS tracking. So the sheriff's office was able to go and got us our camera back.
Wow, smart guy.
So, but it, but to answer your question, yes, it, it can't happen. Typically, we charge between three fifty to seven fifty to replace a camera if it's, if it's truly been destroyed or missing. But generally speaking, that, that's, not generally speaking, that is very, very, very rare to happen. And I would anticipate something like that happening in, in a place like Ogden much more than I would a place like Woodland Hills. And there are many instances of that that I'm aware of up there or anywhere in Utah.
So do you utilize your presence as a deterrent effect sort of like a, this home is protected by ADT kind of a thing? Because I would think that if someone was of a criminal mindset, if they knew that Flock Safety was watching, it would potentially turn them back.
We, we, unfortunately and unfortunately, criminals that do those types of crimes don't look out for these. They tend to blend into the infrastructure. What happens is kind of word gets out. They're like, oh, they're able to find my vehicle in this way. Cobb County did a study around that initially with these cameras in Georgia. And they were looking at their crime stats and they actually saw their crime stats. Couple of specific ones that are tracking that had to do with break-ins come down by about sixty-eight percent. That was their numbers, not ours. So, and we can give you numbers and call and verify, but it was a pretty substantial drop. And so what we think the, the impact is, is that not only could it deter potentially, And so what we think the, the impact is, is that not only could it deter potentially, but really, when, when a crime does happen and we're able to quickly clear that crime, we're able to identify the vehicle, or even prevent the crime in the first place, like, it's not, I like to think the majority of people are deterred from doing crime because they want to do good things and they don't want to do illegal things. But every once in a while, there's people who decide not to make amazing choices. And if those people who are making those choices can be formed and we can change their mind and deter them from doing those things in the future, then less people do those things and you have less crime in the area. That's kind of a, not a great answer for you, but a little bit of both, I think.
Right, no, that'll be a good answer.
Okay.
Aaron.
He has a gun, he has a gunshot detection system. I was just curious if you thought our city would use that, could use that to help identify hunters that are illegally hunting in Woodland Hills.
Well, the last hunters were boas.
Wait, is it a? What is it, a twang detector?
If we could have a lightning or a fire detection, that would be cool.
That would be cool.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it ultimately comes down to the cost versus the need, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, so our pricing's pretty transparent. So both the IP cameras or the LPR cameras, about three grand a year. Usually, the install fee is usually $150 unless we need to come put it in a pole, but I think there's plenty of infrastructure that could be used potentially, so. Talking to the sheriff's office a little bit, if the city's able to have any type of funding to even get one on the main road, and we think that there could be, they could be transformative in terms of their ability to have their force amplified here.
Thank you.
So, what I'd like to suggest, Aaron, if you're available, to attend our public safety meeting on the 15th of June, I think you know more about this product than anyone. And, because I would like to learn a little bit more about it and learn, you know, for example, places we might put these, how many we would need, that kind of thing, what the, what the final cost might be, and maybe you could help us, if you're willing.
So, I found him because I was looking for neighborhood watch solutions.
Okay.
Guess what, this was like a great fit in to help us watch the community. And I like the fact that he doesn't take pictures of people's faces. They only take pictures of the back end of cars, unless the guy's turning around and driving backwards, we're not going to see his face.
Yeah.
But we, we care about catching criminals in the act, the people who steal cars, identifies them driving through our neighborhood, that's what they're doing. They're searching for their next target. I don't, I thought this was a great solution. I would happy, happy to assist you in this area, because it's, it's part of preparedness and security areas.
Right, right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, well, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me, you guys have a great one.
Thank you.
You too, have a safe trip.
Thanks.
Okay, item six, proposed ordinance amending city code Title 16C. Jody.
I'm hoping the council has had a chance to review the change that I'm suggesting be made to the election ordinance. Our current election ordinance is actually out of date. It still calls for a primary election to be held in August or September and not June if we were to have a primary. So it's not current with our, the state to begin with. Also, this one that I'm proposing would allow us still to do ranked choice voting, because it allows us just to follow what the state has outlined in their code. And it pretty much just states we'll follow it. The one thing that is being added to it, and that I'd like council feedback on, is campaign signs. I know during the last election, we had some questions regarding campaign signs, where they could be placed, where they couldn't be placed. I know our prior city code, before we codified it, talked about campaign signs. Then there was the issue in Mapleton, and we kind of went away from even giving any guidelines towards campaign signs. What I'm suggesting is just a simple change that, you know, says you can go ahead and have campaign signs, they can't be within 150 feet of a voting location, which is per Utah code, that they have to be not in, on someone's property, that if you're gonna put them there, you've got to ask permission, and that they have to be removed within a certain timeframe.
Is there anything for the derogatory signs that we saw? Not in our local election, but the last election, we had some, people put some signs up that were derogatory towards other candidates. I mean, can we do anything about that, or no?
Well, we could add into 16C6, under number three, it says, "The City of Woodland Hills reserves the right to remove any campaign signs without notice that it is noncompliant or constitutes a safety hazard, obstructs view, or creates a nuisance," you could say, "or is offensive."
I mean, it's freedom of speech, so there's a fine line.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're running a really, as much as I respect, because I agree with you, I just think we didn't, it'd be, we could not defend that, there's no way we could.
What's offensive to one person may not be offensive to another, and that's why it's, it's something to stick away from.
Yeah.
And I would actually go a step further, and I'm wondering, why wouldn't, why would we even have any sign ordinance that does anything other than, say, we follow state, whatever the state law is?
Because the state leaves that up to the cities, so each city can do their own. That's where we come into it, we don't have to adopt one. It's just, we did have a little commotion during the last election on where they could be placed, could they be placed, how they would be placed, when they should be removed. It just makes it neat and nice.
They're less affected when they're in the woods.
That's where I like to eat mine.
Yeah, we had them close to the road, and one of the candidates complained and made us put them in the woods. So then you couldn't see them, it was fun.
So here, I mean, it, it confirms that you can only have it 150 feet from a polling location. It does, and I correct myself, it does talk about the Utah Code, political campaign signs, that is the state code, it does reference it, so I guess.
We already have limits on sizes, correct?
Yeah. So here, we're just saying, you know what, you need to ask permission, it's just clarifying. What's it, where it belongs.
Now, I believe during the last campaign, the reason for the argument of 15 feet off the city, you know, right-of-way, was simply because of the, the sign ordinance? So does this override the sign ordinance for campaign signs? Or does it still, would that still impose that 15-foot rule by combining the two ordinances?
It still would impose that, because that's in the city right-of-way. So if it's going to be in the city right-of-way, which could be eight feet on some roads, am I right? But on private property, as long as you get permission, you can put it there.
Well, so I, I guess I'm not against having portions of our ordinance that need to be there, but I'd just like to make it as light as we can and reference as much of the state code as we, as we possibly can, just so we're not over.
I think we did that, I mean, we did it with number two and number five, both reference in 16C6, number two and number five both reference Utah Code. Number three, one, three, and five, our safety, personal property, and not putting it on public signs, stop signs, street signs, things like that.
So I guess my other question then would be, is there anywhere in the city that is not private property that a sign could be erected?
If it, if you put them on city property or on an easement, that city yanks them, right?
So basically, it comes down to, did you get permission or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? You look like you have a question.
Well, yeah, now, now I'm going to the next part of it, which is, okay, who, who's going to play sign cop?
Wayne.
Wayne.
No signs allowed.
I mean, it, I, again, I'm just remembering the last election cycle and going.
Exactly.
Yes, some people are just going to get their shorts in the water, no matter what the ordinance is.
I walked out to all of my signs and like paced them all off and made sure they were far enough away.
It's so.
So nobody would complain.
It was a lot of fun.
Would you, would you rather have them say, "No signs allowed"? Because that was my feeling.
No.
Really? I don't think you need, I already don't.
I'm betting we can't.
Oh.
I'll bet, I'll bet if we were to do that, we would end up in a lawsuit. Because it is a freedom of speech, and especially political speeches, so touchy. You can't, you can't really eliminate it.
Well, and you, you had to get permission, right? So I had to go knock on doors and meet people and talk to them, and get to know them, and then ask if I could put a sign. So, you know, I mean, I just think, the, the harder you work, and the more signs you get out, then more people see your name and you get rewarded, right? Like, I feel like.
This is very warm.
I just feel like. You have to work for it.
I think it does help as well.
And then you have name recognition.
Well, it helps as well to kind of see, you know, what, what is the polling? It's your, it's our polling data in the city, right? You can kind of see, okay, so this group of people like this candidate, this group of people like this candidate, so then there may be some word, you know, no knowledge of who the person is versus, you know, if it's spread across the whole city. I think there's a lot of data gained by just that, that visual information.
Sometimes if there's a certain sign in the yard, you're like, I probably shouldn't knock on that door, they're not going to like me, they're not going to want my sign. I'm just saying, there was a little bit of that, too, so.
All right, well, any other questions for Jody? Okay, thank you.
Um, sorry. Golly, so we've got this issue of the 150 feet of the polling place. How does that work with the mail voting?
Are they seen at the mailboxes? If they could have a sign at the mailboxes? No, they can't, that's private property. Or the Dropbox here, that's 150 feet, so nothing on Woodland Hills.
It is, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think there's ambiguity in that definition, since we're doing mostly mail voting now, that's not technically a polling place. So I just, I don't know how that plays, if, if you know what I mean.
Well, we couldn't put it one on private property or city-owned property, right? You could have put one on the public property. So we're not going to put one around the city center anyway, or you wouldn't put one around the mailboxes.
You could put one across the street with the permission of the.
Property owner.
Property owner.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess it's fine, we don't have a polling place within the city.
Not right now, no, but if there was, I mean, if all of a sudden Utah County decided we're not going to do, which there is a push, Aaron David said it, is pushing to not do mail-in voting.
Yeah.
So it could change.
I mean, I love standing in a line, it's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
I guess my goal was to make it as much referring to state code as possible, so that we don't have to defend what we're doing, it leaves it up to what the state has adopted.
Okay.
All right, ready to move on? Dave?
Sorry.
No, you're good. Okay, thanks, Jody. Item seven, request for public utility in emergency access road eastment through lots 73 through 75 at 107 of Thousand Oaks, Corbin.
So what, what this is, is right now, the emergency road goes down, Jody is, there is.
I was gonna say, I have it on my screen, but.
What's your lot number? So. So this is, this is the Shantos. Right now, the emergency road goes, or the emergency exit goes down their driveway to the dirt road.
Top of Woodland Hills Drive.
I have a picture of it right here.
Yeah, that goes, that goes down into Loaford Canyon. There's, there's several things that, that I'm, that I'm hoping to try to accomplish in this. Their driveway is, I mean, I haven't, I haven't gone out and measured it, but based on Google Earth, it's about 15%. The previous owner, Darrell Christensen, we had been working with Darrell Christensen to move the emergency road off of his driveway and onto his lot, which was 107. That never happened. And then Darrell and his wife divorced, she got the lot, he got the house. None of the paperwork was ever finalized and taken care of. His wife, Jean Anne, sold the property to Sean and Kristen.
Is that Kristen, right?
Yeah.
To Sean and Kristen Roylins. So it, it never materialized, it never got done. We had started the process, we'd even gone out and surveyed the property, surveyed a, a new emergency road that would also be used as a utility easement to get water and power down in the canyon, in an effort to try to remove the overhead power lines that, that go down from the gate down by the Recreation Association and come up into Woodland Hills on Eagle Nest. Anyways, so I get a call from Matt Nelson talking about the requirements for a hazard assessment, and then all this came back to light, because it was for the Roylins's on Lot 107 of Thousand Oaks Platte C, or Platte D. Anyway, so what I tried to do was try to, to get ahead of it, to where if we could do this, we could work it out. Obviously, it's not something that we currently have, because right now, the easement goes down Shantos driveway. But in order to get a power line, a power line down there and a water line down their driveway, it's a heated driveway, it'd be super expensive. So I talked to Summit Creek, Ben Brenly, and asked them where they were at as far as trying to get power down in the canyon, to try to, to remove the overhead power lines, asking them if they would be interested in, in trying to do a cooperative effort to get everybody involved. I've, I've left a message for Royce Swinson at Elkhood City to see if Elkhood City would be interested in trying to do an interlocal agreement to try to connect our water to theirs and theirs to ours. We could be a backup for them, they could be a backup for us, for redundancy in the water system. There's also, I think it's 13 acres down on the bottom of Loaford Canyon that is part of Woodland Hills, that would be hard-pressed to get connected to Woodland Hills, because there's no water down there. Now, the overhead power line doesn't matter, because that's SE, or the power doesn't matter, because that's SESD, and there's already a power line down in the canyon. So I'm, I'm trying to bring all of this together, to try to make it work before that door gets closed any tighter and any harder. Now, there's a, there's a drawback, the drawback to the Roylins's is now they're, you know, we're talking about doing an easement across their property. They've got questions, I talked to Janet yesterday about trying to get some answers as far as the, the, I don't want to say degradation, but the.
Effect, how it affects it.
How it affects, does it negatively affect the Roylins's to a point where it's not in their best interest to do it? I talked to Sean on the phone today about Sean Roylins, today about trying to see if we couldn't make it an advantage to them to have a, an easement for utilities as well as an emergency exit. Their concern is, they don't want people driving, you know, willy-nilly across their property, and rightfully so. Can we address those issues, and that's what I'm hoping to find out? But right now, we're just talking, and so we just, I wanted to try to get a feel from the council as far as your interest in trying to, to pursue this.
Where do you want to move it to? Can I ask you that? Can I bring this and you can show me?
Well, just to the far, the far west side of their property, between Roylins', Roylins's and David Johansson.
Where do you want it to move to?
What, what I would like to do, and, and again, just thinking that, that this is.
Because it's right here, this is Roylins's.
Janet, 107, where that line is up on the screen, that's where they would move it to, very far end of the road.
Well, but.
So doesn't it put it over, isn't this way, this area?
Right there. So the, the original design, the, the design that we did with, in cooperation with Darrell Christensen, was, was the.
The back issue.
The blue.
The blue line.
Right?
Yeah, we still, it would still be on our property. It's based on this map.
Just the back side.
Yeah, it would go through our backyard. Yeah.
It's just easier to see on this, I think.
Yeah, the blue line, right? So, this is, this is Shantos, right here. This is the vacant lot. This is David Johansson.
Better option.
And so the original design, this, this line in between right there is the property line. So what we were doing originally was we were, we were splitting the property line and using the public utility easement that already exists. That's five feet both sides of the property line. And then increasing it on lot one oh seven to make it an emergency road also. Now, to me, the drawback, and I've talked to Sean a little bit, Sean Roylins about this a little bit, the drawback to that is that it takes out all the trees and then you basically eliminate the privacy between the two pieces of property. I haven't talked to Johansson yet. Haven't got that far yet. But I think it would, it would, it would require the city to do some kind of a variance to allow us to, to get a driveway there that wouldn't negatively impact the Roylinses as far as hindering what, because as far as hindering what they can or what they want to do. The site plan, I talked to Matt Nelson, who's doing their site plan. They haven't even gotten far enough down that road to, to do a site plan yet. But right now, in, in Thousand Oaks, um, the driveway setback is twenty, twenty, twenty feet. But right now, you can't have a driveway within twenty feet of the property. Now, if, if it was a benefit to the Roylinses to have a driveway that was fifteen feet from the property line, then could we do, could we grant a variance with the trade-off that we also get to use that space for an emergency road and for power and water down in the canyon? And so there's, I mean, again, nothing's been committed, nothing's been decided. The Roylinses wa- want to be careful that we don't negatively impact them and rightly so.
I think their site plan has to be approved before anything because we don't wanna hinder their ability to build their home.
Right. Well, and, and timing too. When I talked to Sean about it, um, they wanna, they wanna have it dried in before winter. And so, you know, there's a lot of moving parts that need to be addressed.
So can you talk about how, so you mentioned at the very beginning that currently driveway and the access is a fifteen percent grade? Give or take. What does this do to that?
Well, Jody, let's blow this up so you can see these numbers.
Leaves their driveway alone totally.
I know.
Okay.
I'm just saying, what's the, what's the slope now? Is it a safer?
So this, this design, again, this design was done. Now, there's no commitments. It never happened. But when you look at, when you look at the, the design that was done, I think this, this road right here is designed to is that, is it fourteen percent? Keep going. Drag it up some more. There's a slope on this dark, or thirteen percent right there.
Okay. So we're talking two percent difference.
Thirteen percent in that portion of it, nineteen percent down here. Again, this was just, uh, uh, the first swag at that. Now, if you take that entire road and you make it a consistent slope from top to bottom until it crosses the property line, you can get it at eleven percent. So, again, we're just, we're just in the, we're just talking about it right now. Um, I just wanted to see what.
So.
Feel was for it and see if you can answer more questions for, for the Roylinses, um, trying to address everything at once.
I, I have a real opinion about this. Can I express it? That emergency exit where it is now is, is just really awful. We can't even practice using it with our trucks because we're afraid to break in the driveway and, and right, you know, we gotta be careful. And, and for several years now, and Corbin knows this, we've tried to fix it. And we've, we've come close, but we've never gone through and, and finished it. I'm all very much in favor and, and for, for doing this and, uh, and getting the emergency road off their driveway.
I'm, I'm just joking, but to what extent? Okay? So, how, how bad as a city, how bad do we wanna fix the emergency road? As a city, how, how bad do, do we want to connect and have the redundancy in the water system with Elk Ridge? As a city, how bad do we wanna get rid of the overhead power lines? Uh, you know, as a city. And then, and then I have that same conversation. I mean, not pulling any punches, but I called, talked to Tim on the phone, Tim Shantel and said, you know, how bad do you wanna get rid of that easement on, on your driveway? And I, I don't remember, but I'm thinking it was kind of a hesitation. And I said, you know, are you willing to pony up? And buy the easement from Roylinses? Kind of a thing? And I, and I says, I don't, you know, I don't want a commitment. I just want everybody to think about.
Yeah.
The benefit and are we willing to, to put something into it? Even if, I mean, cause when we first started talking about this, um, Craig had the fire guys lined up. We were, we were ready to go out, go down in there and, and participate that way as a city to clear all the trees and pull all the stumps and, and chip all the trees up. Summit Creek was willing to participate in excavation and installing the power. Now, I wouldn't necessarily want to install the water line right now because there's nothing to connect it to until Elk Ridge is on board. But you have thirteen acres down at the bottom of the canyon that one of these days is gonna need water. Now, let the developer drive the installation of the water line. Why, why would the city wanna put the money into it? Unless we're going to the extent to connect to Elk Ridge and be a backup for Elk Ridge and let Elk Ridge be a backup for us. So, there's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this. I mean, when I talked to, talked to the mayor about it, it was, you know, his comment was, this is visionary. And, and I totally agree. But if we don't think about it, that, that door is gonna get closed here pretty quick because the Roylinses are gonna build a house. And once the house is built, if there's any way that we can push the house one way and, and facilitate this, as long as it's a, a benefit or not, at least not a detriment to the Roylinses, then they're willing to listen. But the time to talk about it is, is right now. I mean, not that we have to make a decision right now, but at least let's talk about it so that if we can persuade the Roylinses to give us an easement across the back of their property, because we can't do it without that. The back of their property, where the, Jody, can you pull the, pull the picture up? The back of their property drops off, I mean, most of you, I think, know what it looks like out there. It drops off pretty steep. And their property line, the shed that's right there on the corner, the edge of that road is right at the top of that drop-off. The, the, the far side of that road from the shed. That's right at the top of that drop-off. Now, their property line is another hundred to a hundred and, I think about a hundred and six feet from the corner of that shed. And so to get to the easement i- i- is gonna be really, really difficult and really, really expensive. And to get an emergency road out there on the easement at the very back of their property, I would say is gonna be impossible. We would never spend that kind of money to build a road back there to try to make it better. And so this absolutely takes participation by the Roylinses to allow us to have an easement across there. Now, that's gotta be worth it to them. Now, if it's worth it to them in, in the, in the benefit of, of having a, a gravel driveway on the side of their driveway that accesses the lower part of their property, if it's worth it to them in, uh, money, if it's worth it to Tim to, to buy the easement that we would have to buy to get the easement off of his driveway. I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this and I just want us to at least consider these things before that door gets closed and, and it's too expensive to try it down the road.
I, I'd just like to say, so in my mind, like as far as, so this was news to me, so the Shantos, so this, this Plan B would still require an easement on your property then, right? Is that what I heard?
Across the back still?
As proposed tonight, yes.
Okay.
I would, I would like that and I would be considering moving that.
Cause I mean, the most, what I do most days is I'm a bean counter, uh, for this new position and, and when we start talking million dollar water tanks, the feasibility of rerouting this road in our near future, I mean, that seems like that's a long shot. But I do like the idea of securing and so.
Yeah.
Um.
It, it, it.
For the Shantos, for your purposes, I, I would not expect this to be a quick reconstruction of that emergency access road. I mean, it would, this would be more of a long-term strategy that I think in order for us to be able to afford, it would, it would just have to be. So right now, it seems to me that all we're really looking at is do we wanna lock up that easement on the Roylins property before they get a site plan?
Yeah.
That would make it definitely impossible.
But you have to be careful because you're gonna, if, you need to see, I mean, I think if you, you need to work with them and you need to see their site plan because you can't, if you make it so they can't build their home or they can't add on a garage or they can't build a shed or something, then you're negatively impacting their property.
No, I agree. Well, I.
And their value.
My understanding was that they are not that far along. And so that's why I believe Corbin, this is the time you're looking at it because
Right.
Matt communicated to you that, that it's still in the conceptual stage. And so I, I totally agree with you, but I, I, that's why I think that. So if, if we're gonna do the easement, I think that it might actually even inform the site plan that Matt prepares for them. So, not that it's driving it, but it would certainly be part of that decision. So I, I mean, it, it does seem like we would have to move with some urgency if we're gonna get that easement because we can't just hold them up indefinitely.
Right. And that was, that was one of Sean's conditions was that this can't hold them up. He does, he doesn't wanna, if this is gonna put them off, then they don't wanna do it. They don't wanna, they don't wanna take the chance of, of constructing in the middle of the winter.
Right.
So they wanna be able to get it dried in. But, but also Summit Creek needs to get that power line, that overhead power line down. And in order for Summit Creek, Summit Creek to get that overhead power line down, they've gotta get an underground line all the way down in the canyon from Eagle Nest, like it is right now. And so Summit Creek is driving, you know, they've, they've got a, a, a real interest in helping make this happen. Because right now, they can use the P U E between, uh, Shantos and Lot one oh seven. Now, in order to do that, they've, they've looked at doing a bore. Now, they, they're gonna bore three hundred, uh, three hundred plus feet to be able to get from Eagle Nest down to that emergency road right where that shed is. Now, if they can, if they can do an open trench, an open trench is considerably cheaper than a bore. And so Summit Creek is, is interested. To what extent? Ben wouldn't commit. But Summit Creek is interested in, in participating in this. And so if, if everybody can come together, I think the road could happen a lot sooner. Now, obviously, we don't wanna, like you and I talked about, Mayor, we don't wanna give up the, the emergency road that we have right now down Shanto's driveway until this emergency road redesign is completed and ready to use. But once that happens, can we give up the easement down Shanto's driveway? And if we don't need it anymore, then the easement across the back of his property will still be there, but not down the driveway anymore.
So I, I, yeah.
I'm one hundred percent in favor of the discussions being taken in earnest.
I agree. Agreed.
At that point, once you have, and again, hopefully we can come to an agreement. Hope, I mean, but if we can't, at least having the discussions is a good thing.
Yeah, true.
So I think you go, go forward with the discussions and then come back and see what, what you can get.
And I, I think there's a series of steps. Really, I mean, while I think that it's important to be mindful of all the moving pieces, but it, it seems like we can do this first single step. I mean, this is kind of a, a pivoting point. Can we get the easement? I mean, if we can't get the easement, then all further discussions are irrelevant.
Didn't you say that it's, it's within the setback anyway? Like, it's not going to affect their home because really, if it doesn't affect their ability to build, it won't affect their value.
Right. Well, the, the, where the road crosses the back of their property, that's, that's over twenty-five percent. When you're, when you're looking at the perpendicular, when you're looking at the contour lines. Right.
Cause their lot's kinda narrow, so that's why I asked.
But you see how the, you see how the, the contour lines on the road, they tie into the other contours?
Yeah.
So right, right here, where these lines, where these lines cross the road, this is a, this is a cut. So you're gonna, you're coming down here and you're digging out this road. And the further that cut goes back, the, the taller it is to be able to get that road to go in there.
Just like the other part of the road.
And a more gradual slope. So, um, could we do a retaining wall down there? So this is gonna, this is gonna be a negative impact to their property, right? I don't know where the house sits un- until, until they decide, but that's one of the things that we have to address and we'll have to overcome. Again, can we make it work? I, I think we can. Can we satisfy all the Roylinses' concerns? That remains to be seen. So, but we won't know until we go down that road. And before they're, I, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but before they're willing to commit to an easement, they want their address, their, their concerns addressed. Well, I. Yes?
Okay. I'm gonna, you show me something really quick, cause I think you've got another problem.
Oh, boy.
And that's Johansson's have built a shed that's five feet from the property line. They've got a permit from it for it. And in order to put that road in, you need part of Johansson's property because if you look at the property line.
Well, wait a minute, because right here, this is splitting the property line with the road. But splitting the property line with the road takes out all the trees. And, and when I talked to Sean the first time, he didn't like that idea. Now, do the, do the, do the Roylinses not like that idea of taking out all the trees bad enough to let that entire road be on their property? That remains to be seen.
Yeah, but there is a shed there. I can see it. It's right there. There's a shed.
It's right. This is, this solid line is the property line. That shed is right there, right on the property.
So I would be curious, Shantos, how mu- do you get people driving on that very often? Like, how much do you see traffic? How many people?
It's gone down since we moved in because I've been, uh, emergency exit police, unfortunately. And I hate to be that position. Um, but it juice quite heavily. We get recreational vehicles all summer long. We get, um, mountain bikes. We get casual walkers who walk down the driveway and just wave at us like it's public use.
No.
And if, if we don't redesign this based on the purpose for the Roylinses and, and for the utilities to go in, uh, we'll have another discussion about the use of the road and the, my driveway being used for it because it's not acceptable where it's at. That heated driveway is, a- as, as many of you may know, just for utilities sake, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars to lay that driveway. I've had to fix five leaks in that driveway since I moved in. Uh, if we keep using that and we have an actual practice dry run and/or an actual need for, to use that for city purposes, it's not an if it's going to damage the driveway. It will damage it and I'll be darned if I'm paying that cost out of pocket. So, th- there are several reasons why I think there's merit to revisiting the road, not for multiple facets. Another reason is that, that entrance to the emergency exit road makes a sharp turn to, it's really not conducive to bigger equipment anyways. And then on top of that, on the left shoulder of that emergency exit road is about a twenty-five foot drop to my front yard. It really isn't ideal for public use regardless, not to mention the utilities under it that, uh, risk being damaged. So, I, I, I really think we need to figure out a solution, whether it's this, whether we still continue to talk with the Roylinses, but to, to answer your question, Janet, yeah, it's, it's used. I'm to the point where I bought a bunch of chain, a bunch of signs and as of next week, I'll be putting a bunch of, um, chains across my property, starting at my, end of my driveway, all the way back through the edge of my property, to try to reduce it along with signs that I will, uh, enforce, um, conviction of, of the trespass.
Say, do you have private property signs on there probably already?
We do. They take them down. Yeah.
They take them down?
They take them down. They, they, they drop the chains down. It's constant. I'm out there in the middle of the night running down my driveway because I see headlights coming up from.
It's really closed. It's not ever to be used except.
But that has not been the, the, the understanding by the community. They really believe it's a public access road and, and it's recreational use and I shouldn't bear the burden of being the police and being the bad guy in the neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm pretty committed to, to making a change regardless. Um, obviously I have some personal. Obviously, I have some personal skin in the game between the impact of my driveway and obviously the access, changing along me, a bit more use of that edge of my property. But yeah, it, it's, it's not conducive and it's definitely not practical or ideal.
I just can't believe people are so brazen. Like, I would never go down, I mean, I might start to head down there where I saw emergency exit and then realize it's a private property and I would stop, right, and turn around or back up.
Well, even the fire department would not go down their driveway without permission. You know, that's the way we've always felt about that. We just, we just don't do it.
Yeah, and the city's been great. I mean, I don't think I've seen a city vehicle other than Kent said he, you know, drives up and down occasionally prior to his retirement. He, he kind of just look a couple times a year to check accessibility and whatnot for, for trees. But no, the city's been great. It's the, it's the community and it's the access itself.
I think it gets worse for you when the gate at the bottom in Lofer Canyon is open.
Correct.
And it's kind of been open or unlocked.
Yes, and I have resh, I've reshut it. I, I've all but locked it with, kind of put the lock to where it looks locked.
Right.
I put rocks against it. I've done anything but physically disable that gate for me open. And it doesn't last more than a few days.
Shoot.
Okay, I'm just gonna say this is not even one of it. Like, listening to the problem of this, which was a huge concern.
Well.
Well, we've got to keep, it's got to be closed. I mean, we got to have a gate on there that, that the fire department controls and it's locked. Just, just like we do at the water tanks, you know?
Careful. It's an emergency exit.
Yes, but we are there to break those down as soon as there's an emergency.
You can't be.
It's got to be locked. All of our exits are locked. We go through Davis's property. We go to the water tanks. We have all kinds of exits in our city and they all have a chain. Have had for 20 years and I support the chain.
I, I agree with.
Or we'll lose the emergency exits.
But the chain, citizens could break through in an emergency as well.
That's true. That's true.
And that's part of the reason we do a chain, not a gate.
Well, something, we can do something better for, for our exits.
I'm just, I'm just.
In support of Roylance, you know?
I, I, I hear you. I do. I used to ride my ATV down that road before your house was built.
Well, you're about the only one who hasn't continued, so thank you.
So now that the home is built, I don't do that. But, but that, again, this is before Summit Creek Drive was built. There was no other emergency exit and that was the only, I mean, that was the safety valve, right? I, I, I mean, you'd have to be a very good driver to drive down it now.
Right.
Because it's not a great road at all. But at the same time, I don't want to, you know, there's got to be a balance. It was a, it was an emergency exit. So as long as it maintains its emergency status, I'm good.
So I, to the point, you're willing to sign acceptance of, of responsibility for damage done during city events?
It's, it's on an easement and the fact that the concrete pad was built through an easement kind of makes me wonder if we're responsible for that.
And I think, I think for us, I mean, because it's a driveway. They see people, they see us cutting up and down it all the time. If it was on this, in between the Johansson, the Roylances, and you just put a little chain that could just be simply unlapped at the top, I think that would deter people.
Well, and you can establish it.
Come all the way down our driveway.
Well, I, I want it dirt. I want it, I want it unfinished. It needs to be a rugged dirt, in my opinion, a dirt road and narrow. I mean, that's my.
And natural.
Yeah.
And, and clear that it's an emergency.
Do you think, do you think it's local people, this is my question, or do you think it's outsiders? And the reason I'm asking is because I'm just wondering if, if we tried to do some education to the citizens too that this is not a recreational road. This is for emergency use only for, you know, you or the Roylances or whoever. Because there's several properties that have these on there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, speaking to, to the Roylances, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name. Kristen's concerned. I think if we establish a new road, it would allow and welcome, there, there wouldn't be any precedence, if you will, of being expectations of, of using that for recreational purposes. So I think part of her concerns could be addressed with, it's a new road. Obviously, you could easily post that and people wouldn't assume or start using it as recreation and then be told they can't use it 10 years later. So it, it would set a different precedence being a new road. But to your point, it's both. It's local and it's down in Mount Lofer, down in Pace and down in Salem. They walk up Woodland Hills Drive and walk down Mount, the Lofer Canyon. Yeah, it's, it's both. Yeah.
And let me just say that, I mean, so I, I think that, you know, this easement, if it works out and reconstructing that road, I mean, that is still a longer-term solution. So I think that there are things that we need to do to address your concern about the trespassing. I, if you hike the switchbacks, the access to the switchbacks used to be through somebody's yard. And, I mean, a couple of people got ticketed and, and it did change behaviors. And so I, I do think that there can be a solution that hopefully will change behaviors and, and we would love to work with you on that. But I, I don't want to hold this out there as something that, oh, yeah, we're gonna immediately address that with a new road because we just don't have the resources to do that in the immediate future.
Well, correct, but I mean, Corbett didn't bring us here to discuss my, my frustrations. That was not the reason. It's one of the many reasons why it's worth revisiting, changing that road and moving the road. It's, it's just one additional benefit.
But it would be great for the Roylances, right?
Well, but again, being a new road, being on the property edge, unfortunately, it's, it's, yeah, it's just because it's, I mean, our house sat vacant for nearly two years before we bought it. Part of that was used pretty openly and so it became so.
Yeah.
Well-traveled that a lot of people don't care, don't know, just assume it's still.
Well, and I think if it's not part of a driveway as well.
Correct.
So I think on the Roylances, if it's, like you say, it's a dirt road, it's off to the side and it's not part of their everyday driveway.
If it's chained to the top, I mean, that's a problem. We can't chain our driveway. So people come all the way down the driveway, 150 feet before they even see private property. Or come up the dirt road, clear up to my property and they're like, no, I'm not turning around. It's a one-lane road, so they continue up through my property, up to the street. It's. It, it does say that and, yeah, it's, I said, it's posted. I'm to the point where I'm buying cameras and installing them to, to help prosecute because I, either way, I have my concerns, I have my problems, but we're not here for, for, you know, my issues directly. I would love to chat about those, but as far as, I think the intent tonight was just to discuss a proposal to move it. And I guess Brent, to your point, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but the Roylances won't wait and shouldn't have to wait 10 years to figure it out.
Right, no, I think the easement is something that we need to move with all deliberate speed on if we're gonna do it.
Right, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I mean, short-term, we, we can, we can definitely have some, some course of action we can take to help mitigate that, should the, should we be able to accept or otherwise approve moving that road.
Does she want to, does she want to talk?
Can, can you come up and, or speak into that microphone, as long as it's in a microphone of your choosing?
My husband's in New York and he's gonna be nervous if I, if I'm up here. You're talking about the road, like buying the easement, but what length of time are you talking to put that road down through there?
I mean, I don't have any ideas to how much it would cost. Ted, you have any idea how much reconstructing that road might be just ballpark?
If it's just dirt and gravel, just.
And I, I, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I don't know length or width or anything like that, but, you know, you're, you're six fingers.
So would you just be, had to go Chantos, tear out their driveway and do it?
Say that one more time then?
Would you be ahead to tear out Chantos driveway, put those, fix that? And, I mean, it might be cheaper.
Well, I, I don't know how that.
It's not safe though, when you talk about how steep it is and the sharp turn. I mean, this is gonna still be pretty steep and there's, unless you totally destroy that backyard, the back areas, it's, I don't know. It's gonna be more than just gravel and dirt because that's gonna be a deep cut into the side of the hill. Yeah.
I think what we're looking for tonight and what, and Corbett, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're looking for is, is it okay for Corbett to get all of the parties together and have that, have this very discussion?
And we've talked with him. We met him at 6:30 in the morning on Friday to talk about this.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to get, well, I don't feel like it's the most productive use of our time to try and engineer a road right now.
I don't think it's even worth getting all the parties together. I think the easement is the threshold. That's the gate right there.
And I'm just gonna say.
If the easement, oh.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna want to give that easement until we know exactly what we're looking at.
So I mean, it could be a conditional easement or, I mean, it could be an easement subject to certain conditions. I guess, I'm not committing, trying to commit you to anything, but, I mean, that, that seems like, you know, there could be restricted covenants that.
But until we, we're, we're not gonna want to give an easement, like literally through our property unless we know exactly what we're, what's gonna happen with that easement and when and how it's gonna be done. Like, in talking about dirt off to the side, that's not what we want to do. We don't want it looking like a, you know. But it would be natural, like, we all have, we have our trees and we have natural and we just have dirt, like. But it would be, it would be dirt though, not trees. There's a, to me, there's a big difference there. And there's not a lot of room between Johansson's and where that, where that would go.
Okay, so we would have to rough sketch out at least what the city is envisioning in terms of that easement and then we would have to get you to, to agree to the easement and then our city engineer is really got something to say.
Okay, I'm done. No, you're good. We want to hear your concerns.
By the way, we, we do very, both parties. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, this is great.
Because this is, this is the way we'd like to handle it.
Yeah.
Ahead of time and make sure everybody's good with it, so thank you.
It's good to hear your concerns.
Ted?
So just one other thought. I'll toss into the mix because we haven't talked about enough ideas yet on this, on this easement. What if we were to look at maybe just strictly utility easement, if we need to get water, something down off here? And as we're thinking of this idea, could we encourage Summit Creek maybe to look at a location down at the end of Eagle Nest when they're gonna build that road through as an access off down through their property somewhere?
It's gonna get steep.
Yeah, it's pretty tough.
It does.
When you're, when you're dropping off the side trying to get down to the canyon, even though you're, even though you're coming back against grade, you went from what is currently the end of Eagle Nest and you came back, even if you tried to follow that power line, I think it'd be a lot more expensive, a lot harder to build a road.
But maybe that's something that we do need to look at. Maybe we need to look at what our options are and then from there, then see, okay, well, is the easement the best option or is it the only option? And then from there, we can, I mean, I guess we could probably.
Because they're gonna be building a new road down through there anyway, right? Isn't that kind of their idea? Take away the cul-de-sac?
The farther they go with their road, the lower they get, which means there's less grade over.
Yeah, so is there, my thought is, is maybe that's just another option in addition to this throw out. As they're building that road down through, could we look at some way of getting an access off there a little bit lower down, which may not impact properties as much if they were doing that as part of their construction and impact these lots? Just something to throw out there, isn't it?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, so on the one hand, we've got the Roylance easement, as it came to be known, in combination with some, seems like some, at least preliminary engineering as to how that road would look. Or the other option would be to approach Summit Creek and see if maybe the Ted plan.
Nothing's gonna be here tonight, but.
Yeah, he usually is. I'm surprised he's not.
Why, why don't we start with that then? Why don't we start with just approaching Summit Creek and seeing if there is something that addresses all the concerns without some of the burdens that seem to follow what we're talking here tonight?
And then is, am I able to confirm, so the utility easement that is on my property currently, which is Lot 75, that is technically my driveway still, correct? The utility easement that we have?
No, that's just a, that's just an emergency, emergency road easement.
Okay, that's just the, the access easement, okay.
Yeah, the utility easement is by people's side of the property.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know if that answers everyone's questions and concerns, but at least it's a start.
It does have a big sign, doesn't it, outright, out front of your driveway? It just says emergency exit only or something?
I don't want to answer because I don't want the Roylances to, to be any more unfair.
No, but I'm just saying.
But yes, it is there. Yeah, it's been there. It's been there. Well, no, but, but there's also, there's also one about the property is that there's a chain link across the gate at the bottom of my driveway with two metal signs, I believe provided by the city along with on the backside of my property as it comes down towards Lofer Canyon. And it, it doesn't prohibit, it doesn't reduce it. People would lift it up and walk under it and, and/or take it down and walk over it. Like, it did not prevent or otherwise discourage use.
But see, I think this goes back to the problem at, because I'm on the Parks Trails Committee, but there's just not good access and there's just not a lot of good trails. I used to live on Santa Quint East Bench and you had access and you could go back up the canyon and you didn't trespass on anybody's property. There, you know, there was good access. And unfortunately, in our city planning, we haven't planned very well for access to these things. And now it's a problem because we have all these people that want to access it.
We have families walking up from Lofer and then they come up to the back of our property and see that playhouse and the trampoline and all of a sudden they believe it's, well, it's right here on the public road, community property.
Are you serious?
Yeah, it's.
Wow.
I mean, it's, it, and again, we've done a lot to help reduce that, a lot with education and, and talking and such, but it, yeah. Either way, the, I believe we need to at least.
Yeah, I just wish.
Consider options.
Had a piece of property we could just buy.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for hearing me.
Everyone's input.
Money, money, money.
Okay, and thanks, Corbett. All right, item eight. Proposed ordinance clarifying and correcting reference in City Code 1011-2CH. Jody, this should be an easy one, right?
So in the packet that you have, there is, I kind of gave you the code 1011-2CH where it talks about the reference 1011-2DG and it really should reference 1011-2DH and not G. So it's just clarifying and correcting a clerical or error that was made?
All right.
Pleasure, you know?
Okay, that was easy. All right, thank you. Item nine, proposed individuals to serve as members of the Park Trails and Recreation Committee. Also member lungs.
Oh, how's it going?
I don't see either of you here. Is there gonna be a.
They're hiking.
Absentia?
Yeah, they're, they're hiking up their driveway.
Yeah, we, it's okay. So we had a couple of spots, you know this, we had a couple of members step down. They both agreed to stay on the committee in general, but just not be on the executive committee. But that did leave an, a hole and we have to have, you know, to be able to vote on anything, we have to be able to have a quorum. So we needed a couple of new members. So Sherri Berger talked to Dennis Lismby and asked him if he would be a member and he agreed. Not sure what his background is to be on, why he wanted to be on PTR, but he's been involved in some other community things and.
Yeah, he's an audio/video videographer and he makes educational documentaries and, and things. He's now retired, but that's Dennis's and so he's, he's a musician, but he's also a kind of a hobbyist astronomer and he's.
A nice guy.
Yeah, yeah, he's eclectic and he's awesome.
And then I spoke with Mike Slater and I had met him when I was campaigning and he was pretty passionate about the switchbacks. And so when we had an opening, I went and talked to him and asked him if he would be involved and he agreed to do that as well. So those are our two names and he's on the DNR, so he has a lot of knowledge. I think he brings a lot to the table as far as knowledge for the upper part of the switchbacks and just, you know, some of our wild lands in general. So I thought he would be a good addition.
Thank you.
Yep, so.
All right, any comments or questions for Janet? Oh, sorry, yeah.
Just, I've heard this term used before and I'm just maybe trying to clarify. You talk about executive committee versus regular committee. Can you make the distinction of those members that are on one and the other and what they do or don't do?
Well, PTR has subcommittees, so they have like the beautification committee, people that just want to be involved with the idea of dark skies or they just want to help, you know, with the roundabout and beautification projects and things like that. And they're not part of the executive board, so to speak, of PTR, so they don't vote on things, but they work on projects and help with them.
Kind of a decision-making body and a labor body.
Yes.
All right, Sherry, yeah, are here, her way.
I just wanted to give you some information. Um, about the top of the switchbacks, I contacted DNR, and I contacted the feds who own land above the DNR, and both of them allow fires on their property.
Okay, well, maybe we can discuss that more in the public comment portion. We made Aaron wait, but, uh, thank you for the update. Okay, so with no questions on those nominees, then we'll move on to the next item, which is proposed ordinance adopting Chapter 3 Public Property to Woodland Hill City Code Title VII Public Ways of Property, Chairman Branson.
This is the ordinance that has to do with, um, surplusing of property and how to handle and account for it. We've, um, presented it to our council, and, uh, the only question that they had had to do with real property, and there was just a one last part of the, uh, of the initially proposed ordinance that had real property in it, but from, from talking to them, we need to have a separate ordinance on disposal of real property. So we're not going to address that at this time, and we removed that one sentence from that particular, from the ordinance, and we'll, we'll have, we'll put together a future ordinance that will have to do with, with the disposal of real property. There is some issues that need to be further addressed, and I know we're kinda anxious to move forward with, with the accountability of personal property, city personal property, and how best to dispose of that. So, we've taken that out of, of the ordinance, and uh, they didn't have any other, any other critical comment about, about the ordinance as it pertained to just personal property that the city has. So that's what's before you, uh, for proposal to adopt that, the accountability of it, the inventory of it, uh, and disposal of it when the time comes. So basically, it falls under our, uh, financial, uh, financial officer, which is Chris, in overseeing that process and managing it. So are there any questions that any of you have about that?
So Wayne, can I, and, and what I have before me is 732 and the definitions. It's, it looks like there's a Finnish definition that says on loan public property means. Is that, did I get an outdated, is that one?
Yeah, I don't.
Have that one filled in, or I just didn't wanna ask?
No, I don't think that was, was on there.
So, also 734A, it says, "Or transfer personal property for the benefit of the city." Should that be public property?
Yeah, well.
Personal property is described as a car, a pipe, a mower. It's not personal.
It's personal to the city. I guess that's a way.
It's not real property. So real property is real estate. Personal property is not a person's property. Personal property is fire truck, an old fire truck.
Used by people.
No, it's just, it's just not real property.
As that is defined.
So.
What if we just said, "Transfer non-real property"?
But personal property is the legal term for it.
Oh, wow. Way to make us confused lawyers.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's like.
It's not confusing to Georgia lawyers.
I know.
Fred needs it, to make it confusing.
The A, the A and with the or at the end of it goes to B. So they're two different things, but they're tied in with an or in there with B being kind of a separate.
I get what you're saying.
A separate issue.
But, personal property, I know, it makes it sound like.
I appreciate the, the, uh, understanding.
We're so weighing with respect to B, even if you propose we just, the ordinance that we're gonna pass, would we just on, strike on loan public property, or is, is there something that, uh?
We may have occasion to loan out our property.
One's saying that it, we don't have the definition.
It, it's, it's tied into B. A goes to B.
No, but B, that, that B is the one I'm talking about. There's, there's a little da, da, da.
I thought B had an end to it.
It said, "Disposal means the conveyance or transfer of an interest in public property." That's A. B says.
Or.
No or.
Oh.
It just says, "On loan pub- public property means" the dot, 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 dot.
Oh, I see.
And then surplus property means, and then it fills out the rest of that sentence, but it looks like that dot, dot, dot meant, we'll get to defining that in a bit.
And I don't, I mean, do you think that we should proceed and just strike B for now, or should we get that definition and then revisit this?
Um.
I just don't know how critical of a.
Let, let's revisit it.
Okay.
And I don't know, I, that, something happened in the, in the process. There, I think there's a definition. I can't remember what it is, but there's, it's nothing that we can't wait two weeks for to do.
And we're still gonna do the walkthrough, uh, we'll just, we'll be.
Do the inventory.
And we can lag things, and we just, you know, we, we just won't take any action, so, okay, and thanks for all your efforts on this.
Okay, yeah.
Quick question?
Sure.
The $20,000 limit that's in here, doesn't, that, doesn't TAN fit better there?
I took that from Salem's ordinance, so that's where that $20,000 figure came from, and tried to look at it and assess it, and most of it would be, you know, likely, items of considerable value, you know, fire trucks too, fall into that category if they're not beat up and whatnot, but that's where I took that from. If you feel that you'd wanna suggest a $10,000 figure, then.
For example, what's your limit in city money issues? Isn't it 10? I kinda like the same, but just my feeling, but just, just.
That's where I came from, so.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody else have an opinion on that, either way?
I mean, that's a lot of money to our city. Say, it's not for Salem, but to me, five grand, 10 grand counts a lot of kinda known.
I think that's fair. So if we did it at 10, and then that's already within my authority.
Yeah.
Then I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's make that change.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for me, the most important part of this whole thing is, is 7-3-4C, right, and making sure that in otherwise no longer needing the city, the mayor or the city department head or designee, I would say that the city department head has to be involved. Because if, we're gonna destroy a lot of things if we start getting rid of stuff from other people's departments.
I agree.
Well, that, that finance, there's a part in there, the finance director is supposed to inquire and to see if there's city need for that item that one department doesn't need.
All I'm saying is, if we can just make that kind of mandated, that the decid- the department head over such item needs to be included in the discussion.
Included in the discussion, but I think that, I think that there will be disagreement. I mean, and, but I think that.
And I think that's fine.
The ultimate call on whether.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the, the accountability lands with the mayor if the mayor did.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, it, that, that department head needs to be consulted.
No, I totally agree.
So that's, that's all I'm saying, is.
And, and when, when Wayne and I talked about this particular provision, it was one of those things, it's like, okay, well, one person might say, you know, 10 tons of pipe is, we can't get rid of it, and then the mayor might say, "Well, actually, it would be better if we got rid of it. We haven't used it in 30 years. We need to make room." So I, I, what I don't want is it to be gridlocked over a disagreement between the two parties.
And it comes down to, right, there, it, it comes back to our responsibilities versus staff appointed all of their responsibilities, right? There is a, a distinction on decision-making power, right, and so, all I'm saying is, from a cultural standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, is that inclusiveness is, and I want that just ordinanceed out, is we need everybody that is a steward of certain things to have a voice, and that's all.
And I'm just coming from a standpoint of managing people, cuz I've always managed people. You just don't wanna undermine them by going into their department and selling things that they don't want sold, because that's gonna make for a very unhappy employee.
Well, that's true, but then I also think that if there's an employee that hoards things, then all our space gets filled up with stuff that we don't need, and, and then we start talking, adding additions onto the building so that we can store more crap that we don't need. So, to me, I think that, I agree with you. I mean, it's gotta be a delicate balance, but I also think that there has to be some executive authority, and I'm not trying to do this as a power grab, but I do think that if, if it can be undercut by the department head, then that is leaving it entirely in the hands of the department heads.
I just think there's a, there's an element of knowledge that comes from department head, not just Corbett, right, but all department heads that says, okay, this is why it's here, right, and then if, like, if I'm the department head and you're, you know, you, surprise, right, you can say, "Hey, I need X amount cut," right, and then I can come back and say, "Well, here's why it's there," and then you can say, "I'm willing to co- take on that burden of cost by us not having it, so we're gonna move forward," right?
Right, no.
The department, the, the clear defining executive call still rely, resides with the mayor and council, if the dollar amount requires a council.
Yeah.
But, we just wanna make sure, I'm thinking about this not as necessarily now, but as in going forward with the city from the standpoint of, is how do we just make sure that our ordinances reflect the culture we want?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but also doesn't make us hoarders. I mean, I, I, I just think that we gotta.
A hundred percent agree with you there, right, and that's all I'm getting at, is I don't want, you know, things to be able to be chucked by people who really don't know, right, like, I don't want, I don't want a mayor or a finance director to walk in one day and say, "Hey, we haven't used these oxygen tanks. They're outta here," right, without consulting the fire chief, right?
I, I completely agree with that, yeah.
Do you think that's weak in the way the ordinance is worded?
Not necessarily. I just, I'm wanting to emphasize that, that's it. It's just to say, that's important from my opinion, for me to pass it, that type of verbiage has to be there. Is to make sure that there is an inclusionary conversation before assets of the city are, are disposed of.
Unfortunately, frugal, preposterous type people tend to be hoarders.
Exactly.
I'm not.
The territory. You're not.
Everything I have is very private.
Oh. That's me.
Oh, yeah, Brian, go ahead. I can't hear you.
My thing is, say, what I was gonna say is, sometimes it'll seem unnecessary enough, so I think the whole thing with department head is important, because kind of fireside, you're required by ISO have certain.
Oh, yeah, I mean, believe me, the intent of this is not to go in and start selling stuff out from other people, but if there is gridlock, I do think that in consultation, there should be some executive authority and ability to.
I think that's where they're in consultation with the city department.
So, that would be, work that in?
That would be a good verbiage.
Yeah.
And like I said, we're not, we're not saying your ordinance is flawed. We're just, we're just trying to say what we want. Does it happen?
No, I, not a problem.
Okay, Brian, we can see you now. I don't know if we can hear you yet.
Still can't hear you, bud.
I was gonna say, if there's.
Call me and I'll put you on the speaker.
That level of conflict, we got bigger problems.
You wanna call me, Brian, and I'll put you on my speakerphone?
That's probably for a closed session.
Okay, here it comes, boys and girls.
Speaker.
Hi, bud.
Can you hear me now?
Better, well, yeah.
Okay, so the two, two comments, one, um, on the dollar amount. If we go to auction and something goes really well in auction, um, we could see those dollar amounts, uh, go over, and once we put it into auction, um, we don't, we, we can't withdraw it once it goes to the, to, to, to bid. So we'll have some issues with that, and two, uh, with Ben's point, a consultation with the, uh, affected department head, uh, could be put in there easily. And they, you know, but it, but it definitely would be up to the mayor to make that decision, because we need that executive. We, we do that in industry all the time, um, and, and you need to have that executive ability.
Thanks, Brian. And, and so when you're talking auctioning, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we, the dollar amount would have to be, or the value would have to be assessed before it goes to auction, and I mean, it is very possible that it could come in higher, and I don't really know what the, I mean, Chris, do you have any thoughts on how we would make the preliminary assessment? I mean, I, we could go to eBay and see, or, you know, I guess even the auction site. I mean, I think as long as we have some justification for setting a dollar amount where it is, I mean, maybe that's the best we can hope for. I mean, it's not like we can bring in an expert witness and have a, a sort of an economist weigh in on the value of every little widget.
I think value is depreciated value, not sell value.
Okay, so what we bought it for, less appreciation.
With depreciation, and then if it sells, if one of our old trucks has a depreciation value of 100 bucks and somebody buys it for 100,000, great, still falls under our side of things as 100 bucks.
I like that. And we have all those schedules, Chris, or we, we would have those schedules assembled before we would be moving forward to sell anything?
Yeah, many of our items have depreciated to zero, so that's, the, we've had many things for years and years and years, whether it's roads, water, fire, office supplies, you, you're talking, we got a lot of non-valued, undepreciable things right now, but they still have a value to us, or potentially to somebody on eBay or the auction sites.
That we can document that, presumably. I mean, I don't know if we would be able to go so far back as to have a purchase price, but.
I think you just gut-check it, right, if it's, if it's something that goes crazy, cuz it would have to be something rare to really go extreme and beyond, right? I understand exactly what Brian's saying, and maybe that's all we do is in this, you just say, "But" exemption of, you know, auction situations, right, or something along those lines. You guys can figure out better verbiage than I ever can, but something that just says, okay, if it breaches this number, but it is due to an auction valuation and bid, that is fine, you know.
So would you prefer it be depreciated value, or would you prefer it just say it as it is and then say, or both?
I, I personally think depreciated value makes the most sense, cuz we can control that number, and that number can be calculated. An auction number will never be able to be calculated. We can ballpark it, we can estimate it, but then some collector of old brush trucks says, "This is mine," and says, "Hundred grand, done."
I agree with you. The only, the only, the only challenge I've seen that is the starting value, so.
Yeah, I think you just, i- in case, you know, if we ask Chris, you know, "Chris, hey, how much is this laptop worth? You can give me a, a roughish, between 100 to $20,000 valuation, somewhere in there."
Yeah, and if we go.
At 120,000?
Yeah, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars versus 20,000.
And I get your definition of depreciated value, because the way I look at depreciated value, let's, let's get 20 roll-offs and just start talking and stuff, cuz it's not worth anything. But are you saying depreciated value in, in some other context?
I'm saying something, if, if we're taking it to auction, per Brian's statement, right? If we're taking something to auction, we know it has value, right? I'm not talking about junk, right? I'm talking about anything that could potentially breach that $20,000 mark.
10,000 now.
Or 10,000 now, whatever we decide on, then we just, we know, if, if it, if it's our depreciated value, right, we, we've got depreciation on all of our expensive things, and those are all standard calculations.
Which is not what I envisioned being sold, by the way. I mean, the expensive thing, this is just stuff.
I, I.
Which probably, I don't even know we get anything for it, honestly.
Honestly, I think the only thing that potentially could go crazy is the, the antique fire truck, right? That's the only thing I think that's. That's the only thing I think that's going to go crazy potentially, maybe the compressor. But even then, I, I don't know, it was twenty thousand new, it's not there now, even though it's barely been used. Was it forty thousand new?
So, but but Chris, I think ultimately what this, we, I think we need to be sure of is so when we pass this, we have the tools
Twenty four?
Come up with that valuation.
Twenty four.
And do you feel that we do?
I think we come up with a valuation, but I think there's, there's a bigger discussion that keeps happening here, and I don't know how comfortable I feel. I mean, maybe what we ought to do is just try it on a trial basis. Let's take, let's get some of the stuff cleaned up. Ted, if you're ready to get rid of that fire truck, that would be a great one to start. There's some other old fire equipment there, there's some um, used uh old water bins or spray bins in the um, in on some of the shelves. Maybe we've got some old pipe we don't need. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff in there that might be, so that truck may be valued to Ted, but it only gets put out twice a year, so maybe I determine that that's just not worth it. So then we come back to the mayor and the mayor's going to be the ultimate deciding factor on that, I would assume, or does that need to come back to council? So I can't, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I said, I think that would depend on the value we assign it, right? I mean, it's, it's really all about valuation, which I think comes back to my, my, my concern is that I just want to make sure that we can document that value before making the call that, you know, this needs to go before council, or we have the authority to uh offer this up based on our valuation of it. That's, that's where I'm trying to just make sure that the the exercise can relatively easily be done. And I, I, I like Ben's idea of, you know, having a, a, a starting value than the depreciated um value, and and if it falls underneath that threshold, then it's fair game. But but again, my concern is, is where we start, and and that's what I'm wondering from you, is if, if that's something that you can relatively easily and and um reliably a- assign.
I, there's going to be challenges, I can just tell you right now, um, and we're just going to have to work through this bit by bit and see how we go about. The other thing I would be concerned about is if we start getting rid of stuff, I would not want to see stuff start filling in back behind it that's not necessary. So if we're going to make the effort to clean this up, let's clean, clean things up. And if if it's just going to get filled in, you know, if the fire department's going to go and get another used truck, then it's just, it's just not worth it. Frankly, and we're just going to keep hoarding and and putting stuff in there.
We don't have money to buy other stuff and backfill right now.
Yeah, that, this is how we're paying for our roads. So we can actually buy some stuff we need. All right, well.
It'll be a process, is what I'm saying.
I'll put in there whatever you want.
Put in, this will be a process.
Yeah, this is practice.
All right, I'm not sure.
Are you good, Wayne? Do you know what you're doing?
Just tell me what I'm doing. I'll work something out. I'll talk to Chris further about it and see if there's a better way of describing that and
Doesn't need to be this hard, does it?
No, I, I'm used to it, really.
All right, well, that works for me.
Okay.
Okay, well, we're coming back to it anyway, so thank you.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
So that's tabled.
Or they wait for the next item.
I know, you are on the next one.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, policy and procedure for city code complaints, yeah.
Complaints. This is just a little bit of cleanup. Uh, we've had a, a um process, and we're not really changing the process uh in any major way. Uh, we're kind of cleaning up some of the language that's, that's there, emphasizing the things that are going to be important for the city to look at. And uh, we're encouraging um people to talk to their neighbors. Um, I know the comment was made tonight about the anonymity of uh of complaints, and um I have a different view of that. I, I think that uh, if neighbor's going to talk to neighbor, there obviously is no anonymity in that. But I, I think most can get done with neighbor to neighbor contacts. Uh, some won't be, I understand that, but it shouldn't fall on the city to bridge the gap all the time with those kinds of uh complaints. And um, a- as well as being able to guarantee anonymity, I don't think, I don't think that's right. Um, if somebody's complaining about me, I, I would like to know it, just to understand better. And I think there's few people who would say, no, let them complain anonymously, I don't care, I don't care to know. Most people would, would like to know. And if it's neighbor to neighbor, that's an opportunity, the neighbors get together and kind of work things out. We can't, uh, we don't have the resources for everybody to be anonymous in filing complaints. And I realize that we may not get some complaints because people won't want to complain on their neighbor and won't want their neighbor know that they're complaining on him. Uh, well, they can live with that then. But, I mean, if we go around the city and see obvious violations and if there's action, the city can take, we don't have to wait for a complaint to come in to to take action on something. So, anyway, that's a little bit long in tooth, but that's kind of the changes we've made to that complaint, and we're encouraging them to come into the office and file a complaint. You know, where they are and can talk to them further about it, if there's a need to do that, to get more data and more information. So, that's suggestive, that adjustment to that city complaint uh process.
And I agree with Wayne's assessment of anonymous complaints. I'm, I'm not in favor of it at all. And and I have a personal experience in my neighborhood where someone did come face to face and and it really was positive, the whole experience handling that, so I agree with you. If it was anonymous and went to the city, it would have been ridiculous for this particular situation.
Well, and you can, uh, people can be targeted, you know, you, if you're going around anonymously, you can just target that you don't like.
That's right.
And I think there needs to be some accountability.
And we've heard, we've heard, I've heard a number of good comments, like Doral mentioned, where neighbors, you know, they've worked it out between themselves and actually kind of brought them a little bit closer uh, in in getting things accomplished.
Better friends, yep.
So.
We don't have the resources to be the arbitrator between contentious neighbors, right? And it also probably makes things worse if, if I submit an anonymous complaint against, say, Brent. Now Brent's looking at all of his neighbors saying, are you the jerk that threw me under the bus? Now, instead of Brent, just, I am the jerk. All it is, is now you and I, even if it doesn't work out, you know, and I didn't destroy potentially the relationships of a bunch of other innocent people.
Yeah.
I just, I've never enjoyed the anonymity availability. I think it always needs to start with, you know, Wayne, something that you're doing for, how can we work, right? Help it out.
Sure.
We have to start with residents dealing with their own problems and not forcing us to get in the middle, which has now caused a lot of issues throughout our history. We have to get out of this drama as much as possible for the safety of the city, the residents, the financial safety of the city. It, I, I see no benefit personally to anonymous complaints.
Amen. Yeah, I agree with that. Um, the one thing I'm thinking though, as you're, as you're talking is uh, and by the way, I, I very much agree that we should be out of this business as much as we can. The hard part is there, there are ordinances. And so I don't know if we can get out of the business. You know, I mean, if, if we're basically saying, okay, we're going to pass ordinances, but then it's up to you two to figure out how this applies. I don't know that that.
Well, let me give you an example, contrary to that, Dave. We had, we had two neighbors and one of them started to put up a barbed wire fence for his horses. And the neighbor saw that, said, hey, went over and talked to him, that's, that's not allowed in the city. Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, I'll, I'll remove this barbed wire fence.
I totally agree.
But we could have gotten involved in it, but we didn't need to, because that neighbor took care of himself.
Reasonable people, I think that, that will totally work. What about the exception?
Well, if they try to work something out and it's an ordinance issue and they can't, then they come to the city and file a complaint. And we'll follow up with that.
And I also think that it's important to keep in mind that we can't chase, I mean, we just don't have the resources to chase down all the violations either. And so what, what happens is we get overwhelmed because it's easy to just pile on anonymous complaints. And so I'm not saying that we're looking for a deterrent to complaints, but I do think that being required to stand in front or to to get to face your accusers, that is a benefit. And then it also, if it, if it sort of tempers the propensity to just file fifty complaints against a, a neighbor with no reprisals at all, then we get overwhelmed and and then we are in a situation where it's like, and then we get blamed for not enforcing too.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got an earful today.
I, I, I agree with you, okay?
Like every day.
Just to be clear, I also don't want anonymous complaint. I'm, I'm more thinking of a, a recent.
No more fake citizens.
Issues. No, 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 I get that. Um, recent issues. Regardless of whether it's fake or not, what we've got is we have a citizen who is saying they're not keeping the ordinances. We've gone and looked, our ordinance officer at the time went and looked and there was some validity, certainly not to the level that this person was accusing. But there was some validity, he worked with that person and is continuing to, or at least until he was no longer here, was continuing to work with that person. Um, but now we're being accused of not enforcing, and I'm like, I, I'm trying to unravel, how can we best handle that scenario where somebody wants to play not just a a, a reporter of a problem, but the judge of the problem, and you know, they basically want to be the judge, jury and executioner. And that, anyway.
They want to be judge, jury and make us the executioner, right?
Well, I, I think we need to be a little careful, but if we have a known complaint who gives us a complaint and we look into it, maybe it's not as serious as originally thought, or that person just says in your face, I don't care. I think we need to go back to that complaint and let him know what we have done and and kind of where we're at and what, what next steps are if we're going to take them or not. I mean, many of our ordinances are, are toothless to enforce. And we don't have a city attorney, we don't have a city court, and so we're with, with some exceptions of our nuisance ordinances, we don't have a lot of enforcement authority in some of our, of our ordinances. But I think the communication back to the person to let them know what we have done, I think will go a long ways. And maybe there's some more things that they can do and neighbor to neighbor to facilitate the, the end result.
And that, that leads you back to no anonymous reports, because you can't go back to report if it's been anonymously reported.
That's right.
But the one thing that I would recommend that we stay away from is the, the statement or the approach that we don't have enough resources, because even though that's true, very true, um it's not a very, it, it, it's not a very um strong argument, because they'll just say, that's your problem, is the city, you should get more resources.
Well, we will if you want us to raise taxes.
I, I get that, and, and this person speaks out of both sides of their mouth, and I don't know what to do about that.
I think it's also, we, we have to help our residents understand, for better or for worse, enforcement of ordinances is discretionary, right? And that's an authority the mayor holds. We can't do it, and we're also not guilty if an enforce, if an ordinance is not enforced.
We're, by the way, not unique in that way, right? Enforcement of any law is discretionary at any level, state, county, federal government, laws are, are discretionary enforcement, always.
That before. I've not heard that before. I love hearing that, that, that is what I think.
If Dudson pulls Janet over, sorry, Janet. When Dudson pulls Janet over, he's gonna go, he's gonna razz her, and then he's gonna make a decision, right? Was she going sixty? Was he just seeing the teal Jeep and said, it was, she was one over, I'm pulling it over because I need a good laugh? Right? But no, Dudson wouldn't do that, but.
He waves at me all the time.
But the officer always has the ability to say, this is a warning, or this is not.
That's true.
Right? You broke the law, but that officer has the authority for it to be discretionary. So when our residents come and say, you don't enforce anything, it's a great opportunity, this is what I try to do, is take the opportunity to say, well, we appreciate the feedback, we're working with it. It's also important to understand that laws are discretionary. Right? And explain that, that way they're not feeling like you're breaking the law, mayor. Right? But you're, you're, you're saying, I have a hierarchy of options, assets or resources, and I have to make a decision and there's only a finite amount, and that's it, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that strongly.
Okay, so.
All right.
We'll go forward with that.
Any other?
Yes, there's any objection.
That was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any city budgetary items? I don't know if there were any, Chris, any that came to your attention?
What, what was the outcome of the floor? That needs repair and.
Nothing. Oh, it's free. Corbett's brilliant. He basically, Corbett, do you want to talk to this, or do you want me to talk to this?
Well, it was a budgetary item last time we met.
Geneva came and checked the cu- concrete. Um, and Corbett talked to him, he ran his ideas through the Geneva concrete engineer and said, now, all I need to do is cut back to, so there was like a four inch other crack, he says, break out to there. And now we're just waiting for uh either my job here in the city or another person's job who's pouring concrete to have ten five gallon buckets of excess, which is s- pretty much standard, except for my last floor.
Six.
Six, okay, six. And we're gonna, it's all formed up, it's just ready, so it will, and I dare say the cost is under a hundred bucks.
Yay.
And so Corbett's got some brilliant ideas that he threw through the Geneva engineer. Yeah, so the concrete side, so we still have the drain piece that needs to go in, and Corbett's, like I said, kind of gone through exactly his idea. The engineer basically thinks Corbett walks on water, um, but that's another topic for another day. Um, but it'll be all, yeah, big man crush, but uh, yeah, it's.
It's no longer a huge budgetary.
It is not a ten thousand, hundred thousand, or even one, or even one thousand.
Yeah, thirty or, I thought that was what the concern was.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Thanks for that update.
Okay, uh, item thirteen, resolution adopting the March twenty twenty-three check disbursement. Any comments or questions there? Okay. Fourteen, uh, fourteen A and B. We'll skip over C, Councilmember Kennison Fire.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay. Parks, Trails and Recreation, Councilmember Lund.
Seems like we need a little discussion, do we? Um, just some clarification on the grant and the the proposal that Sherry submitted for spending the money, um. No, well, that's not, this is grants. We're talking about the grants. So the, the water bar portion, um, that's just maintenance. We've already done that. Ben and I hauled up our own equipment and and got neighbors and friends to come up, and we spent a whole, almost a whole day, good chunk of a Saturday going up and down the trail and cleaning out the water bars and digging, digging the holes deeper and making sure. So that portion of it is just maintenance that was on the grant. Um, so there, there's not, that's not any cost to the city or anything like that. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify um, some of the things, um, the park benches, we already did one up at the top, she wanted three more. And there, we're going to get the site plan for that and we'll present it, but it'll just show you where on the trail, it's some natural ledges. It's actually viewpoints on the trail that are beautiful places that people like to stop anyway. So PTR thought it would be nice to have, you know, a, a nice bench, and they're just the metal benches that are like the rubber coated. Um, so they do really well in the weather. Um, so they do really well in the weather and just cement the footing sand, pretty easy. Um, and I think, did you supply the cement last time or did you get?
No, there was a pallet in the basement.
Okay, we just borrowed some. So, um, and then.
Oh, no, the, the concrete on the.
On the bench.
On the waters bench in the park, the city supplied that concrete.
Okay.
The concrete up at the top I supplied.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Not that I'm expecting you to do that again, I'm just saying.
Concrete's cheap.
Um, somebody, so it's just, it's not like a huge, it's not that we're doing a lot to change anything. Um, I think I mentioned in my email, it's kind of ironic that the avalanche sign is on a short pole. And as soon as it snows, you can't even read it. Says avalanche danger, but you can't read it because it's below the snow. So we're gonna put it on a taller sign and then just, um, we'll present the signs when we're, when we're ready for those. So that's all I had, but I just wanted to clarify.
All right.
Are there any other questions on that?
Not yet, I have other questions, but I'm assuming that the site plan will probably.
Uh, you're up next anyway, Wayne.
I'm assuming that the site plan will probably address maybe a lot of, some of the questions that I have, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we address all your questions, so. Anyway.
Okay.
Maybe, I mean, I read, I did read your email and I feel like, yeah, most of them are not big concerns, but yeah, we can make sure. Is there anything in addition to what was in the email that you had worries about?
One thing was, it looked like, I'm not sure how you're planning on putting these bollards in and securing them and then being able to take them out if needed to get equipment up there. So that was one question that I had, I know.
I was gonna have Ben address those, so he'll, he'll address that.
Yes, so these are not, so in the past, we've made a lot of bollards in the city out of just a piece of pipe, right? And we slam some concrete in it and be done. These are actually going to be professional bollards, so we're buying bollards for this that are designed for the removable and the, the pad locking effect of the bottom. Um, and so they are designed for the purpose of removal.
Okay. That was just one question I had. We talked about signs and there had been no discussion to my knowledge about what was going to go on the signs. I would, I, some of it is evident probably, but.
We want to poke our eyes out. We've had so much discussion, but it's okay. Like, I mean, that's what we talk about every PTR meeting.
No.
I did poke my eye out in the last PTR meeting.
Like, it's every time, but it's okay. We'll, we'll bring all that so that you can.
Okay.
We can present it.
And we'll, we'll look at it and if there's any feedback, we'll, you know.
Yeah, we can present it.
Often there's back and forth on these things, so look at it and think that this was not addressed. I wonder what if, and come back to you and say.
We could do that.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
All right, thank you. That it?
Yeah, Wayne, I'll get all that gathered and then we'll reach out and meet with you.
Okay, Wayne, you're up next. Okay, I'm planning commission, all right, thank you. All right, council reports, Councilmember Hilliard, you're out of juice though.
Want to borrow mine?
Okay, so today for the South Utah Valley, uh, Solid Waste District, we've got a board meeting tomorrow night. Um, and then I also had a luncheon today hosted by, um, the construction company that's building the new transfer station. Um, which was a lot of fun. We got a tour of the new facility. It is, I've never thought I'd say this about a transfer station for garbage, but it is beautiful. It is a beautiful facility. It is, it is going to be a massive, massive upgrade for us. Right? You're gonna find garbage to take there, just so you can just go. Um, but the walls are all going up, the push wall is all in place where they push the garbage up against and into the compactors. Um, and then the exterior walls are all, I believe as of right now, there'll only be like twenty percent left. But they were gonna raise all those walls in three days. Um, and so this is a massive building. So if you get around to just wanting to explore it, it's, if you go down Spanish Fork, pass the freeway, so under the freeway, down past the airport, you'll hang one of those lifts and it'll come, kicks back up and around and then you'll see it. You can't miss it. It's the massive, huge concrete structure. So the reason none of us can ever get concretes because it's all going to the transfer station. But it's really, really cool and we're making great progress and they're actually now ahead of schedule.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kinnison.
I don't have a, a meeting report, but I just wanted to say that Central was really helpful and very cooperative and working out a last page for Craig. I'd never done that before and it sure took a lot of communications, uh, to get it done and to have it fire off and all that stuff, so. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know they were great to work with and helpful to do that, to do that. It was important to the family and I knew that because the family told me beforehand. So it's good. I just wanted everybody to know they were, they were very accommodating.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lund.
I don't have anything new that I haven't already reported.
All right.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Can I, um, I don't see any place else on the agenda to do this, but I got an email today from, uh, emergency, uh, county emergency management. They're offering dumpsters for sandbag removal. Um, sandbags, when they come in contact with floodwaters are considered hazardous material. We haven't had that, but they're offering dumpsters for sandbag removal and they need to know by tomorrow. I, I don't think we do, but I just, I wanted that, I want, that's you guys' decision, not mine.
I don't think we do either.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Could we train them in the sandbags down in the roundabout for asphalt?
I'll ask.
What if, like, someone like a thief in the night just went and filled it in with some asphalt?
Well, I've talked to the county commissioner, he bumped us to the top of the list.
You're making a bad.
Not gonna make a bad, I think they'll fill it in in the night.
City council guy used to do that.
Really?
Charles Spence went around with his pickup, filling it with asphalt.
They do it.
All right.
He's committed.
Councilmember Pratt.
I don't have anything to report.
Hey. Uh, for me, I've got a MAGA meeting coming up this week. SCSD held a public hearing, they opened the budget and adjusted the, the power cost adjustment. So just trying to find affordable power.
With SCSD, can you push them to relook at their, what is it? Regulatory requirements, Corbett, on like, like conduit and connections and they have over and above regulations than like Rocky Mountain, so.
You should come to the board meeting. I mean, as a, as a builder, I mean, you, I would not do it justice if I'm trying to, uh, convey your concerns, but our engineers are, are there. I think they would be receptive to it or at least provide the reasoning why.
Well, I've talked to them, but it's.
Oh.
Yeah, I got the same thing from, um, one of my neighbors, uh, when he was building his place. He said SCSD came in and made him put in all this conduit and then they didn't even use it. And so I, I'm a little concerned over what SCSD is imposing on.
Well, so I mean, what was the answer they gave you as to why they require?
I'll give you the example, so I'm, you know, building this house around the corner. And they require steel pipe on the house down into a steel ninety degree angle. And then it can transition to PVC three inch, this is all three inch pipe, up to the street. Now, the whole bill for all of that, just that piece of pipe, because then I had to do two inch pipe, which was hilariously over not needed. But that three inch pipe cost us about eight hundred and fifty dollars. Just the two pieces of steel were five hundred and sixty of it. So Rocky Mountain doesn't require those to be steel. So I could have taken that eight hundred something bill from, for the resident to, to something, right? And the reason they said was for grounding purposes. Now, my only pushback there is, and Corbett knows probably all the electrical reasons why, but Rocky Mountain doesn't require it. So there's ser, there's something there that's different. They're also requiring a two inch pipe to run down and up also where, for a fiber optic line. Now, fiber optic lines, how big, David? Six hairs woven together?
Well, and what is the fiber optic line?
It connects the meter out to the street so they can read it. So it's a, it's a communication.
It's a dedicated fiber optic line.
Yep, and it has to be in a two inch pipe. It could fit in a quarter inch pipe, but a two inch pipe is, you know, sixty dollars a length versus a half inch pipe, which is ten or five. So it's just, it's little things that add up and it's, it's detrimental to a resident. If, because that's a, that's a budgetary item.
Right.
That just bites you in the butt every time.
Well, who did you talk to over there?
Ryan.
Cause I mean, if, if you come to the board.
He said that.
I mean, if, if, if there's justification for changing behaviors or changing policies, I, I think the board would give you a sympathetic ear. I mean, so, I mean, we get people that come and, and make cases like, well, solar's a big one that comes up a lot and, and, but it's actually, it's, it's effective, it's, I mean, SCSD is adjusting its solar policies. I mean, I, I, I think that, you know, as with anything, I mean, I, I've said this before and I stand by it. I mean, we are, Woodland Hills is part of SCSD. I mean, it's not like it's an us versus them. I mean, we're part of the district, we're part of the owners of the infrastructure and we should view it as that and we should be protective of it. And so if there is something that potentially stands to harm the infrastructure, we need to say, okay, well, this needs to be considered. And, and I think that's all that, uh, would need to be done is, is if you had something that you wanted to, to present to the board and say, well, either you gotta show me the science behind this or I would encourage you to make a change. I, I think that you'd get one or the other for sure.
Yeah, just from my calculation, it seems like an undue burden to impose on residents for no, no reason beyond it makes our lives easier, right? Yeah, pulling, pulling a wire through a two inch pipe's a cakewalk.
Yeah.
But it can also be achieved at one even.
I, I think that if, if it's something that, uh, is, especially if it's an ongoing thing, you should bring it up to the board. I mean, I, I mean, I, I can, but you, you're gonna notice the mechanics of it.
I'll sit down with Corbett to get the correct vernacular.
Light photons are getting bigger, so they might need to be just.
Yeah, yeah.
And they like to flop around sometimes. It's a million gig fiber optic line that runs the whole, our electric meter.
Uh, well, it works for me. Okay. Uh, upcoming agenda items?
Let's go.
So I, I.
Oh, Ted, sorry.
Which hat are you wearing?
Meditation this time.
Oh.
Engineer.
That was not the hat I was expecting.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, Jody suggested we do this. We talked about this the other day in staff meeting. I don't know if, if you want me to report, so we heard back on our application for that additional two hundred thousand for the culverts. Um, I don't know if you want me to report that here or put it on an agenda item.
You know, I, I mean, I, I think that Carrie should be here for it, um, so.
She's been emailing me, so she's.
I mean, I, I, we can't really discuss it now anyway, I would say, so I would say let's, let's put it in. Oh, well, I guess you can give the, uh, I don't know.
Can you discuss the synopsis, we can talk more about it.
Jody, what do you say? Is it?
While he's not making a decision, he wants to place it on the next agenda because.
Okay. Why? Be careful how you say this. You want to place it on the next agenda because?
Um, because I think we should probably discuss it. Is that big enough?
Is there a reason that it needs to be discussed?
Um, yes, there is, so, um, the, the short of it is, um, we may have to talk about different avenues. There was a, um, I don't know how to word this out, getting all the way into the, into the details, but, um, there was some stuff on the state side that, um, that we learned. And just have to report on that and reasons why the state actually did not end up with the money, not just specifically us, but it was all applicants under that program for the state.
Sounds like a good thing to add to another agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely done, Ted.
Good job.
Thank you. All right.
He's a sly one.
Who do we have doing, um, maintenance up at the park?
Eh.
Well.
John Stowe.
Oh, well, John Stowe is doing irrigation, uh, sprinklers, yeah, and we are, did, we got the offer to Peterson, right?
No, there was discussion today.
Well, not, not that kind of maintenance. I had somebody telling me that, uh, one of the apparatus in the, in the, uh, play area was missing three out of four bolts.
Wow.
Oh.
So I'm just wondering, we probably should have somebody going up there.
That was fast.
At least, at least once a month and inspecting that.
See if it's together.
So my husband and, and Peterson are going to mow and do maintenance and edge and.
Yeah.
And they're already gonna be slammed to do that even within ten hours.
It's gonna take, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not looking for that, I'm not asking your husband to do more.
But I mean, he would be happy to check, but.
Who do we have that's doing basic maintenance and inspection of our equipment that we've got?
It's, or, or Ben. Ben's good at park maintenance. Doesn't that fall under PTR?
Oh, that actually, I'd like to say that too. That actually is a really good.
Is it because I'm a man? Is that it?
No, I can take a look at it.
No, I'll go take a look at it and then I'll make Corbett, give me what I need and then I'll go and do it.
Thank you.
I got nothing else to do.
Will you go do a little inspection of the playground equipment?
You know, every spring and who knows what happens.
If you can talk to that resident again and know exactly where, that way I'm not.
The teeter totter?
The teeter, teeter totter's about to totter?
It's got one bolt left.
It's going, that helps me then. I'll go and take a look at it and then we'll, we'll work together there, Mr. Nose.
And then put it on our agenda, right?
Right.
I don't need any of that.
It was a possible agenda item, but it turns out it's resolved. Ben volunteered or Ben was.
He got volunteers.
I got phone toll.
All right.
I'm sorry, Ben.
Anything else you want to get, Ben?
It's all good. Yeah. I, I don't know how much I want to say, but when I was in Elk Ridge, the trust came down on us pretty hard for not having an inspection log. If somebody gets up there on that, on that playground equipment and gets hurt and you don't have an inspection log that says you've done your maintenance.
Oh, boy.
The trust frowns on that pretty seriously.
Oh, okay.
You draft up the log, I'll go do the inspection.
Does the trust have, they do, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, they've probably got, I mean, does it require any specific expertise or is it just kind of visual inspection?
Can Ben be our, be our inspector?
But, I mean, we could fill one out.
Just, uh, get a log.
Maybe you can have a committee member that.
Would you like me to come do the log?
Yeah, you guys, you've got not only an executive committee, you've got an operational committee or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, use your operations.
I would be concerned just about consistency there.
Yeah, for sure.
We need somebody who just, I think it probably makes more sense for us to contact the trust, get the log, find out who can fill out said log and then let's move from there. Because if I can do it, I'll do it. I have no problem with that.
Okay, so now it is an, an agenda item that we need to have them come report back on.
Yep.
Okay.
Who would call on that?
Okay.
We also probably need to refresh the, the, uh, fall zone. They need nine inches of fall, um.
Oh, the chips.
Rolled wood chips or rubber, where, I don't think we switched to rubber, but rolled certified wood chips. I think Linden at last was only, Linden nursery was the only one having it in the valley a couple of years ago.
They can have my chips. Where'd Ted go? Chipper Day coming up.
Certified.
They have to be rolled.
Rolled.
They have to be soft and.
Oh, so my thorny chip.
The rose bushes you chip, you want the kids to come out of there?
Well, when I was a kid, there was asphalt under our.
That's right. We, we didn't even have a playground. Make our own sticks and.
Yeah, it's not the same.
Okay, all right, just throwing out ideas.
Chipper chips.
Okay, uh.
I love it.
Well, while you're thinking parks, do you guys want to see about finding somebody to look into that?
The bark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you get that one.
Okay, I got it. I'll talk to Chris. Do you know the details, a little bit of that, the bark? Yeah. I'll ask Chris.
It's it's nine nine inches of of cushion. I'm sure with the snow and stuff, it's compacted down a little bit. There are people that will actually come up and certify the playground equipment and that might not be a bad thing every five years or so. Um, but if we're gonna get into certifying, we better keep going. And we got handrails, we got steps, we got lots of outlets. We got all sorts of things that that could be gone through and looked at each year for safety. Uh, vehicles, we have logs on all the vehicles.
Sounds like a compliance audit.
Yeah, no kidding.
Maybe dump that on.
Dump it on the enforcement officer.
Gonna have to hire another person, Chris.
This, I know it's pretty much, it's never anything, but Corbett's right. If something happens, you know, that that's. If something happens, kid breaks his arm up there, potentially we could could have some liability same. I mean, we've talked about brakes. If something happens to the brakes on one of the trucks. We're gonna be liable for it. If we have fire hose that we didn't test and it blows up and hits somebody, we're liable for it.
All right, well, let's start with the park and we can try to eat the rest of the elephants as we go.
Right down.
It wouldn't take that long to just go through and check things at the park. Make sure everything is okay and that there's no wires hanging out anywhere.
Worst case scenario is I get a new box of bolts.
If 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 you guys are volunteering, I I'm not standing in the way.
I think if we can go down that rabbit hole of, you know, what does the trust allow? If I comply with what they'll allow, then I'll take care of it.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, any other possible upcoming agenda items? All right. Nine fourteen, I mean, it could be worse. So let's reconvene at nine twenty and then Aaron, your long awaited comment order. Okay, uh, council member Kennison, would you please lead us in the pledge and council member Hillier, would you offer the invocation?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
If you all would like to stand, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so very grateful to come together as a city council this day, as residents, as staff. As members of this devoted community, we are grateful for our nation that sits under thee. We are grateful for thy protective hand that continually watches over us. We pray that we may be able to continue to be worthy of those blessings. We pray that thou will guide us this evening. Help us that we may be able to make the decisions which are best for our city. That we may be able to make the decisions that will help us be profitable and prosperous going forward into the future as the city of Woodland Hills. Bless, we pray that thou will bless those that volunteer so much to our city, to our staff, to our. Our other leaders as well. Strengthen them in their sacrifice away from their families for this great cause and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, public comment. We'll skip it. Anyone that's waited a half hour. Deserves to be heard.
He's helping me out. You've got two minutes.
Um, I just wanted to keep you guys informed about some of the stuff I'm working on, some comparisons I want to go with, if they're in the wrong direction, I'd like to know. Especially steer in a different direction. Um, and then also I wanted to mention to you some ideas I want to do to try and raise money to pay for some of the things that would help our city. So the first thing I wanted to let you know that I prioritize preparedness in a number of different areas. There's a lot of categories that the state actually monitors or teaches. The first one's shelter, but in our case for the city, this building right here is the city's shelter. And without this city or without this building being functional, it puts us in a backward position of being able to take care of the residents. So one of the areas I want to work on is getting the backup power to this building operational as soon as possible. That would be the most biggest priority I want to try and focus on. I'll share with you some ideas that I learned recently. That um, we're actually a lot closer to that goal. Um, I liked expense on it's gonna be a lot lower than I thought it was. Originally that was gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars. I was with Allen.
Wakefield.
Wakefield, hoping we should probably look at as a budget. So I called Corbett the other day. I said, Corbett, we have the energy generators laying around. He says, yes, we have a hundred, um, hundred. A hundred thousand KVA? Sorry.
Close.
So. Hundred thousand watt. And so anyways, um, the city already owns this this piece of equipment, but we're not using it yet. I sent copies of information to Allen Wakefield. He actually reviewed the pictures and the capabilities of generators. If that machine can actually power this facility right now. Are you guys aware of this?
Is this the same one we're gonna use at the well?
Nope.
Okay.
We used it.
Oh.
But it's available now, right, Corbett? Available now. So I would like to propose that we um engage either Allen Wakefield to come out here and take a look at what it is we need to do to. Mount it onto the pad over here and then connect to the building. And also what we gotta do to kind of fuel in that uh to support that machine. That's one of the protections I want to go on. Just keep this building operational during a catastrophe. And that is one of the first. Obviously, the second one would be solar power. That costs more money, correct?
Uh, potentially, it can offset by our bill, right? So.
Overtime.
It, well, it even can, like, the payment to the solar could be even less than what we're paying currently for electricity. So it it's it, we've got to look at those numbers.
So the solar combined generator are two good ways of helping us maintain operations. Uh, the second thing is water. Uh, I want to make sure that we have ability with extracting the water from our groundwater groundwater and put it into our tanks. And that's where we need to add additional fuel um put up there by power to generate the authority up there. So that's another area that I want to raise money for. If we don't have it in our budget, we have to go down and raise the money for it. Um, I just talked to um Jody. Um, there's inventory coming up in a couple of weeks, or a personal one of the personal property.
Well, yeah, we're doing the inventory, then we've got to pass the legislation to be able to.
I want to find out what the gap is. What is the gap on? How much fuel we already have and how much fuel do we need to be able to fill up these reserve tanks? So trying to cope with a dollar amount, I need to try and raise to accomplish these critical components of our community's preparedness. The third area um that we're talking about preparedness is food. I'm not gonna talk about that right now, other than I want you to know the direction I want to go with food. I want to promote the creation of a city. Garden.
I love that.
Again, but this, I want it to actually do more than just be a city garden. I want it to be a self-reliance farm where we teach people. How to do this, to self self-reliance at that that location. So that means teach people how to raise chickens, how to butcher chickens, how to raise rabbits, how to butcher rabbits. How do you use the, you know, how do we do those things so you can take care of your own family? But there's also opportunities for people to actually grow gardens there for their own personal activities because they don't have a lot of growing space or growing sunlight on their own property. Um, how do we get to learn about that? I'll talk about that in future day.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have that. Property we had to buy that we just put the split rail fence up. Could we plant a garden in it? It has.
Yeah, that's future discussion.
Can't do anything on that?
What I meant was no.
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying.
So when I came from Arizona, I was in subdivision industry. Okay, I was developing two thousand lot of subdivisions. And in that, um, I was able to get certain land dedicated to the city with purposes of of open space.
Whatever, wherever gardens, it's gonna have to be fenced though because of the deer.
What you're saying, where do we leave the land from? There's developers wanting to develop their city. Not a reasonable city to request that certain percentage of that is open space around control that city.
Well. I mean, that's what we did with Summit Creek.
Perfect. So again.
We don't have the control, but they that was, there was a certain percentage had to be left open space.
So the concepts already been tried and used. There's still a growing space that we might be able to.
Use lawn space in the park.
There's a lot of lawn. Well.
Well, as a neighbor to.
Less to mow.
Okay, just say it. Just. The section next to the mayor's house. Let's wrap it that up.
We need a set of topics tonight. Let's just give you an idea of where my mind is going.
Okay.
Now the city. Um, the next area of the purpose is security. That's when I started doing work by trying to find out ways we can secure our neighborhood. That's when I got block saved. And I'd like that, but I want to.
We actually have some snipers that live up here.
I wasn't talking about that camp safety. But I'm talking about just keeping criminals out of the neighborhood if we can, like you and I, who's coming in and out. Um, and then the uh. Next area was in areas of communication. So the area of communication for our city, I want to promote the idea of building a communications trail. County has one, sheriff of county, sheriff's. Sheriff's side. Anyways, it's a trailer that basically would have all the equipment necessary to maintain um amulet communications with um the county, state, or their way. The uh next area would be after communications to medical. That's what I started working on about a month ago and that's what I created all the. Yeah. The medical trailer associated with the medical team that would be called by you guys through the use of the fire department or through the fire department. Um, that would be sourced and created for our community if it's okay with that. But those are the primary things that I'm working on right now. Um, I'm trying to go into volunteering to help me carry out those things, help me raise money. So start with raising money real quick. Um, I understand that um. Um, fundraising for a city can be a challenge for some. Citizens who feel like they're already paying money, too much money in taxes, and they want to pay anymore. And I agree with them. But can we give them something of value that they would actually enjoy going to and willing to pay for that they're paying for anyways? And what I'm talking about is putting on a Hawaiian luau where people would come to have fun. They were gonna pay money for dinner out with their their spouse or their family. But it would be a fundraiser for the city. So I'm throwing that idea as a way of helping us to be able to raise money, but also combine people together in our community to talk more and get to know each other better, better. And I can share my culture, as you know, Hawaiian. Um, I have lots of contacts with the Hawaiian culture. Hawaiian um. Luas and dinners for my uh. We're going to Utah county. And we raised about eight thousand dollars. And so. And they've been bringing live dancers.
No fire dancers.
Fire dancers. Unless they're like the glow sticks. They have one that is glow sticks.
I like it.
Do glow stick dancers.
And so glow stick.
That's same white.
And so.
Just sounds wrong.
And so the idea is to have the event, I want to propose a date of August nineteenth, which is close to when um. Summer's ending, school's starting, people should be coming back from their vacations on pre-sale tickets a month in advance. So that we can actually have revenue already generated, build a pay for all the food materials, products that we're gonna be giving to the park for the event.
When's Woodland Hills Day?
Second weekend of September, two weeks after.
Um. So I talked to Jody about how we could run the books on it. All right, Jody? You can set the sub account deposit all the money in there to pay for food. All the extra ticket sales? Okay, so that is uh to be figured out if you guys still agree that this would be worthwhile. And sure, if you do on an annual basis, it would be important to do. That's real Hawaiian too. Hoi Keke. Rupish.
I love the idea of the.
Thursday night before Woodland Hills Saturday.
But it would be.
Yeah.
I just coordinated with the agenda.
Thursday, Friday movie night, Saturday party.
Yeah, I mean, that that I guess that is a possibility. Make it part of Woodland Hills Day.
I'd rather do that. That'd be huge.
You're gonna have potentially festival fatigue. I mean, I'm trying to step on.
Well, one thing we have. A thought. Is typically the city does like the breakfast and then they also do the dinner.
Replace the dinner with.
Replace the dinner with that.
Well. I was actually not thinking that because. The dinner we don't, we haven't been charging for and it's been donated by, I think, SCSD or Summit Creek or something.
Comes out of our budget.
We can have them donate.
Yeah, we pay for some of them, but we get some charged.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But my point is, it might not. Might not go over well if we replace it with a, oh, now you're gonna have to pay dinner.
Buy a ticket and we're expecting a donation.
Right.
Because then the fire department wants the donations in the morning in the boot at the breakfast and that would take away from their donations that they get.
I'm just saying, you're you're changing the culture of Woodland Hills Day if you do this.
Well, there's been some discussion, this opens up a whole other, but because some people come. I mean, we pay for J-dogs with the idea that you'll get one or two, you know, one. And some people come and fill a whole plate and then they take them home to feed their family. That's not right.
I agree.
So that there's been some, do we hand out tickets? How do we limit that? Like, you get one, you know, kind of a thing. A person. Must be present to eat.
That's impossible to.
We're gonna stand there watching.
Well, I know, you can't do that.
Cheating your hot dog.
You can't do that, so.
To leave it alone.
Um, and then with with the fundraising, oh, did you have something to say, Corbett? Oh. With the fundraising, I to so it's to what particular purpose? I mean, I, because I mean, the emergency. Management department is still in its developmental stages.
This is for emergency management. This is for emergency preparedness. There's a difference. Big difference in preparedness and management.
Right, but what I mean, if this is a city sanctioned event, where is emergency preparedness coming?
It's for city resources, so we're gonna add fuel to the tanks. We're gonna connect the generators to the building. We're gonna set up a generator, um. Maybe we we need a generator running at the transfer station. What do you call it? The uh. Booster station. Uh, that needs to have enough fuel next to it so it can maintain water supply to the residents in that area. These are all city assets, city responsibilities that require city money to pay for.
I don't disagree with any of that, but is, do we have an emergency preparedness department? I mean, I, I mean.
It's we're we're under emergency management.
Right, that's what I was getting at, is so if it's under emergency management, I'm just wondering, is it, is it a little early to be raising money for a department that hasn't even really been fully?
No, the money's not going to the department. But the money for the for the generators, the fuel, the connections, that's outside of emergency management.
It's what?
Carrie could present it. It'd be an agenda item.
When we, when I talked about the trailer that will be used for emergency communications and the trailer will be used for emergency medical support. Those would be under emergency management and they would be called upon by the city and the fire department, EMS activates those resources.
So. Regarding those in particular, so I like, I I love the idea of the fuel and the generators. I, that part I'm on board with. I'm a little concerned about, I mean, the reason why the county is designated as kind of the. The level of government. See, in Utah, all levels of government have a purpose. And they are kind of a stacked level. So the state has certain responsibilities that they perform, the county has responsibilities they perform, and then the cities have responsibilities they perform. It's the 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 hope is. It's, the, the, the hope is to avoid redundancy as much as possible. So when we start turning our city into things and replicating what's already been done at the county, that's not the way we're supposed to be organized. That's not the point behind it.
I see this at a different level. I see this as having a, and I'm going to talk, I made a note to talk to Rachel about a medical trailer, because that would be a huge asset to our city when the county's tapped out, when they're too busy. But, but a medical trailer makes me wonder, medical supplies really expire, so I got to talk to Rachel about the feasibility of that.
Well, a medical trailer, isn't that, I mean, that kind of what our ambulance is?
So, Dave, you're.
On a small scale.
Correct, when you're talking about that the county is there to help support our city. I completely agree with you 1000%. My only problem is that the county has a disaster that affects the entire county, 600,000 people. We're talking about only 500 homes up here. You are not going to be their priority.
I, I, I understand, but I also don't think from a sustainability standpoint that we have the resources or even the expertise, and I'm careful there, because I'm not talking about, I mean, you're definitely got a lot of expertise, that's wonderful.
No, I don't.
But.
You do, you do.
I, the hardest thing to do with anything is to sustain it, to keep it going. It's just, it requires a lot of work. You know, I'm on several volunteer boards and my goodness, the amount of effort to keep it going. And when you do have a transition from one leader to another, a lot of times those things fall apart. And I just, I just am concerned that, you know, I, I want to make sure that our eyes aren't, as my dad always used to say, that our eyes aren't bigger than our stomach, you know, when it comes to what we do. So that's why I love the fuel, I love the, I love the generators, I love doing our best to prepare the facilities we currently have. I think those are great ideas, not completely on board with the whole trailer thing.
Let's.
I think it's a, yeah, let's have that discussion.
So Aaron, well, what would you like as far as a takeaway from this exchange here tonight? I mean, what, like if we could narrow it down to three things or something?
Well, I guess the first thing I would like to know is, am I heading in a good direction? So it sounds like the first couple ideas that I have are heading in a good direction in regards to facilities here and the water support.
Yes, and Allen had a fit when the power goes out and our doors won't open. So a power thing for this building is a great, is a great place to start, in my view.
So again, I'm teaching the city, I teach families. Your family should also look at these same priorities, how your home, how's your water, how's your food supply, how's your security, how's your communication? These are all things that you guys should also be leading our cities as well, because who gets the plan, it's going to happen. We need you guys here leading us, not at home worrying about taking care of your family.
They just handed out 50 satellite phones to US senators, because they're predicting that communications are going to go down or something.
I think so, I think it's going to happen.
The internet's going to go down or something.
So I would, I would propose.
That would actually be good.
That if any of you were interested in having them over and sharing these kind of one-on-one ideas, I'd be happy. So I'm offering to other residents in the city, just come and say, here's some concepts that you should be thinking about to take care of these priorities, right? It's a, it's a long list of things that you should probably get ready. Because you have to prioritize which ones are most important.
The other, the other thing, again, I keep coming back to the trailer, and again, I'm trying to maybe morph the ideas where it might be more palatable. I mean, our city's not that big. Do we really need a mobile trailer? Or could we just develop like a communications room here in the building? Or a, and, and I, I get that.
Absolutely. I love your thinking. Those are great ideas, but I just don't have them anywhere.
Yeah, I know, this, thank you. So Aaron, I, I think that what, what we need to do is, is if you want to, so if you want to, it sounds like talking to Todd Wakefield is something that.
Allen.
Allen.
You're close.
Allen Wakefield.
Actually, I think there's Todd Wakefield.
There probably is.
Somewhere in your life.
There is, Google it, Google it.
So talking to Allen and then getting the information on fuel, and then, I mean, if you were to talk with, I mean, to me, because I, I do have some concerns about the luau, I like the idea. I, I've, I've never been to one and would love to have that experience, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I have.
But I think that that would be something that we do, and we need to be sensitive about the implications for Woodland Hills Day or days.
I think it might kill it, yeah.
So that would be something that I would suggest, maybe.
Do you want to push it to a date further away? That's fine. That's fine, I mean, we have, well, sure does, we don't want to have it later in time because we want to use the park. So try and give a date that might work.
Well, it is tough because June is super busy, July, everyone's on vacation, so August is kind of.
August is getting ready for school.
Kind of come back around.
So the maybe, maybe focus on those three things from this, and then if you want to meet offline with others and discuss other efforts and advancing them, but as far as the council's concerned, I'm just trying to make sure that you feel like you've got some.
I'm more concerned about you guys feeling like you understand what I'm doing, and I want to make sure you guys are in board.
I get it.
So if you give me any feedback that, that change directions, that's fine. There is one other way I think we can raise money for the city, and I talked to Chris already about it, and that's the idea of creating a, a Woodland Hills online shopping mall, that when people go to the shopping mall, they purchase a painting on the wall, a portion of the sales comes to the city, usually about 2% to 2.5%, and then the sales tax also comes to the city. So those are some ideas I want to play with you. I talked to Ben about it, we have a couple ideas on that, and we're still, but.
It's still, yeah, it's in beta right now.
But it's a way that we can try and generate some more sales tax, and, and a little kickback on top of that, without the customer or the residents paying any more for the service that they're providing anyway.
Right. Okay. All right, well, thank you for the comments and.
Lots of work.
Everything that you do.
It was worth you staying for me, thank you.
Might not for you, but it was worth it for us.
It was worth for me. Oh, I guess I do need that.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public comment portion and move on to item 22. Decision regarding ordinance 2023-06 adopting water impact fee.
I'll make a motion.
It was a long time ago. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, so.
If that's where we're at.
Okay, so the water is, a motion for the water by.
Do we, do we want to do water and sewer at the same time, or do you want them separate?
Yeah, separate.
Yeah, we need to do a roll call vote for each, but, but I, I mean, it was a long time ago, but we did have some discussion about the money for the sewer that, I mean, I don't know if we need to look into that and revisit. Yeah, no, the water, I agree, that's not tied to that at all.
And I, and, and I would recommend that we just focus on the impact fees tonight, not the, the bigger question of possible reimbursement or whatever.
I like that idea.
Well, we've got 90 days, right, before it even takes effect, so we can repeal this, we're well within those 90 days if we find out more information.
Hey, that sounds great to me. Okay, so motion by.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Pratt, seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item 23, ordinance 2023-7 sewer impact fee.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sewer impact fee. I like that it's less.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lunt?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 2023-14 approving the loan for the fire truck, again, subject to legal review or legal approval, I guess.
Dora, I move we approve that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Kenniston?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 25, ordinance 2023-8 amending city code title 16C regarding elections.
I move to approve that.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Pratt, seconded by Councilmember Lunt. Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 25, ordinance 2023-09 clarifying and correcting reference in the city code 10112CH.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 27, resolution 2023-15 approving individuals to serve as members of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two individuals who were named previously.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Lunt, motion, seconded by Councilmember Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. 28, we are tabling, right? That's the table, and I, I sometimes table things that we're supposed to vote on. All right, 29, adoption of policy and procedure for city code complaints.
We're tabling that one too, aren't we?
No, I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Hey, motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 30, resolution 2023-16 approving the March 2023 check dispersments.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?